Good evening, welcome to the Stonewood Meeting of February...
Thank you.
7:00 PM. We have our first applicant tonight from 14 and 16 Old Country Way.
Continued from December 21st, 2017, 14 and 16 Old Country Way LLC, a 14 and 16 Old Country Way in Situate, a test of finding and importance of Situate zoning by law sections 820 and 950.2D, 520, and MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6, and/or such other relief which the Board of Appeals may grant to change, alter, extend the pre-existing non-conforming use of a maximum impervious area at 14 and 16 Old Country Way in Situate, accessories map 49 block 2 parcels 56 and 57, which presently contains two separate single-family dwellings and accessory structures to a use which will not be substantially more detrimental than the neighborhood and which will contain less impervious area and two buildings containing allowable commercial uses in the business and water resource protection overlay zoning districts.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
If you have any other questions?
Yes. I am, to let the audience know and the chair know, that I am a direct-to-butter to this property, having an office space and owning the building at 5 Old Country Way. So I'm going to be recusing myself from this application, and I just want to make sure it's clear on the record that I have not taken a position either privately with other board members or publicly with respect to being in for or against this application. So with that...
And also, I am a butter as well in the neighborhood, but due to the rule of necessity, I filed with the town hall saying that I can stay on this as long as no one has any objections there because if I leave, we don't have a board, so we can't see the application.
No objections.
Thank you.
We can't hear the application, it doesn't mean it can't be constructively approved.
Would it mean that you needed all three votes unanimously?
We always need all three votes.
Except for the finding.
Well, yes. The rules of necessity provide for the board to be able to, with disclosure of potential conflict of interest or bias, and disclosing it to the members assembled to be able to proceed. The applicant has had, doesn't have a problem going forward. Is there someone from the audience who's questioning whether Mr. Halen will be able to, you know, hear this unbiasedly?
Well, we're not sure. You are a butter, John, and in your property, which you are now, you're extending the garage outlay number two, two bays.
Should you name an address? It would name an address, just for the record.
Okay, on Union Street?
Your name and address.
Oh, Steve Montero, Matt Jenkins' place. I abut the property at 14 and 16 Old Country Way.
If we object, what would happen?
If, actually, your question, we'd have to...
I can explain that.
All right, if you don't mind, Bill.
If you can object, this would be constructively approved and without any action from the board.
The board is required under law to react to the application, to hear the, schedule a hearing in a timely manner, and to make a decision according to the hearing. If we are not able to do that, unwilling to do that, we can't, it's not like we can do a pocket veto and just ignore it and it goes away. It becomes constructively approved.
Okay, that's a good reason for going along with having everybody here. Sharon Harrington, 15 Jenkins Place. I'm either in a butter or in a butter to a...
I would tend to agree with Sharon.
Yeah. I guess we should proceed then, if there's no other questions? We got it at that matter.
Okay. Yeah, my name's Bill Lawrence Berger. I'm here on behalf of Jeff Elise McPatton with the property and applicant, Rob Proctor and Ben Proctor, who are here with us tonight. We're also from our engineers, Ross Engineering, excuse me, Paul Merribito from Ross Engineering and Greg Gansy from Ross Engineering. Paul's going to make a presentation, but first to explain what the process is. The reason we are here tonight is this first step of multi-step process. We are not here tonight to have contractor offices approved. We are not, that isn't allowed use in the zone. There are two residential homes in the property, that isn't allowed use in the zone. What we have here is, because we're in the Water Resources Protection District, we have an existing condition of impervious surface that covers approximately 44 percent of the property. The reason we are here is under Section 820 as a bylaw, so that we can change the impervious surface and actually, which Paul's going to demonstrate, we're going to reduce the impervious surface. The standard which we have here is that the alteration of the impervious surface shall not be substantially more detrimental to the existing impervious surface to the neighborhood. As a matter of fact, we're going to demonstrate that it was quite an improvement. So, in a sense of transparency, what is going to happen is with an affirmative vote of this board, and then after that, we're going to enter a considerable process. And what the considerable process is, just so for those people who are here aren't familiar with it, there's going to be a site plan review with the planning board, who in turn refers this to, I think, those 12 or 14 other boards and commissions for their commentary and review, amongst others would be a design review committee of the planning board. In addition to that, there is concurrent jurisdiction from the Situate Conservation Commission, who we will file for a notice of intent to hopefully obtain an order of conditions to move forward in this, and a stormwater permit from the Situate Stormwater Authority. So this is the first, and there are several other situations. After this board, we do intend to hold, because all we're talking about is impervious surface and reduction of it, when we before go with the planning board, we do intend to have an informational meeting for the neighborhood. In light of this, there's some confusion perhaps, in retrospect, we should have had something in advance, but we didn't want to get the cock in front of the horse, because until we have the ability to move this impervious surface further away from this coverted situation, we cannot make application with the planning board or conservation. So, that's what we're here tonight, and that's what we're going to do. So at this point, I'd ask Paul to give an overview.
Excuse me, may I make a comment, please?
Just a minute. So, I have a question, and I try not to interrupt until you guys get through everything, but I have a question that isn't covered by what you just addressed.
Certainly.
Are you planning to address the buffer zone, no disturbance, 150 feet issue, or do you have a reason that you do not need to address that? I'm asking.
Yeah, we do not need to address it because we have a pre-existing non-conforming use and it's also a structure. And under Section 820, and actually 10.3, this board, under the standard I have, will allow, will allow uses which we're going to present to the planning board are allowed uses in the district subject to site plan.
So not uses, we have a bylaw and, you guys or you correct me if you disagree, that says, for better or worse, you can't do any activities or obviously build anything which would cause earth movement or disturbance within 150 feet of a tributary. Now, I don't mean to be taking an opinion, at least not yet, on whether this property is involved, but I'm quite certain that some of the people here tonight and our town planner have taken the position that that bylaw does apply here, and I'd like to hear from you, agreement with that, disagreement, why it doesn't apply?
The bylaw is allowed to extend to that radius, yes. But that bylaw is, we, the condition of the premises, pre-exists that bylaw, so that we have pre-existing non-conforming use and structure. And what we're demonstrating, what this board has the authority to do, is, what we're asking is, is the impervious surface on this, which is 44 percent, we're reducing it to 20, 8 percent or something. Right now, there's a culverted pipe, which, albeit is, water flows through, I don't think it functions as a tributary, but nevertheless, it's not pertinent to what it is, so let's assume that.
Well, sorry, sir.
You just go, we have to finish it, we'll finish this.
And I don't want to belabor the point, but if, if you feel that the question of disturbing earth within 150 feet is not appropriate tonight, I'd like to hear why. I don't just want to hear that it's not appropriate, I'm open to hearing why, but, or if you want to argue that it's not a tributary, I'd like to hear that.
But what I'm saying is, the condition which we're asking for modification on, pre-exists the adoption of that bylaw.
So, do I understand correctly in that, for lack of a more complex legal term, you feel that you're grandfathered...
Correct.
...from complying with the no disturbance?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a couple quick, we're to hear from the applicant, and the board will come there, and then we'll open up the audience, so everyone in the audience will have time to respond or ask their questions, we go through the chairs, so no one will be left out, or, but at least that way we get the information out first.
Anthony, just to jump on that really quickly.
Yes.
This is, this is not a virgin lot, right? So this lot has a quite significant amount of impervious surface already, there's, I think, three buildings on it already. It's a little bit distinguishable, for instance, from what happened down, further down Country Way, I think it was 320 Country Way a few years ago, where that was a completely undisturbed lot, where they were seeking to introduce a completely new impervious area, and here it's going in the reverse direction. So, not to get too technical, but under the, under the powers test, you don't even really need to get a finding, because we meet the test, but I don't, I don't want to get, I don't want to get too far into that, just to say that, I think that that's where it could be distinguished, that's why it's a grandfathered situation.
You feel that because we're not dealing with raw land here, we're dealing with a lot that is improved to some extent already?
And has been improved prior to the adoption of that.
I understand that, so it's grandfathered.
Yeah.
Isn't that open to the question, and again, I'm trying to flesh out some of the issues, hopefully in a more, in a faster manner, because I know that they're going to come. Where do we draw the lines there? If a lot has a thousand-foot single-family home on it, and you're going to put 8,000 feet of commercial space on it, is that grandfathered, or do we take into consideration in our intensification, not only the intensification of impervious, but also the intensification of this matter which you're, you state that you're grandfathered from?
So, you know, we're not here to discuss, you know, we're not adding more impervious surface, we're taking it away.
I understand that, and we're going to analyze that, absolutely.
There's a chart, there's a chart in the zone by law that says what is prohibited use within that overlay district, and we're not seeking to introduce any prohibited uses within this zone.
Understand that.
So, hazardous materials, all that stuff, none of that is what we're here and what we're proposing to do, so I think that that's really important to understand as well.
Okay.
It's a question of coverage, is really what the issue is.
And we, we have had other sites in town that have been within 150 feet, that have been worked on as well.
Okay.
It could be down the harbor, North Situate, other areas.
Just by way of example, with the Morning Glories project?
Yes.
The same zone runs through the Morning Glories project.
Is, is that project within 150 feet of a tributary?
Well, it's in the Zone 2 of, it's in the Zone 2 aquifer. But, but for instance, the town...
That's the question I'm asking about, being within 100, which I'm not sure that this property is, I think that that might be open for discussion, but the town, the town planner feels that it is, and I feel that this is an appropriate question.
Sure, absolutely. But, I agree, but just to put this in perspective also, I don't want to get too fire-filled, I'd like to make that presentation.
Sure, of course.
But Phase 2 of Situate sidewalk project runs right over these culverts. So, if you can't do this, it means Situate cannot do the sidewalk project, we're loud and clear about that one, because it's going right down to the way, which actually goes over, all right, the planned project. But, if there's any other question, whether Paul will present it?
Absolutely, thank you.
Paul?
Good questions.
Yeah.
That's all right, I can scooch over if I need to see.
My name is Paul Merribito from Ross Engineering Company. I'm not here on behalf of the owner and applicant this evening. The subject property contains 29,249 square feet of land. The perimeter of the parcel is outlined in yellow on the property. This is the front of the street, Old Country Way. In the existing condition, there's two existing single-family dwellings, there's some outbuildings, three outbuildings, and there's some existing pavement. This is asphalt, and the lighter blue is existing concrete. There's also a 24-inch pipe that runs through the property, and so that's a part we, about truly have to 3 feet below grade. There's also a small gravel area here. There is a fence on the west side, the north side, and the east side of the property. This is a small strip of land, it's, this is part of the property that provides access out to Jenkins Place. The area you see here, on the area you see colored, represents about 44 percent of the site, is impervious, which would be the pavement and the roof areas. This next plan shows what the impervious areas would look like, what the project would propose is to construct these proposed buildings you see in brown, and the other shaded area would be impervious pavement. Impervious pavement would take on all of the stormwater and the rainwater, it actually treats it, and it would recharge it back into the ground. This rain pipe would stay in the same location, there'd be some green space around the property as well. But again, as the Storm Burger pointed out, the focus here this evening is to concentrate on the impervious area. This, this represents a decrease of 44 percent of impervious area down to 28 percent impervious area. And the impervious area would be the rooftops of these buildings here. Again, this, this lighter colored area is all impervious pavement. I'll point out too that the runoff from the roofs is considered to be clean water. I think with that, I'll end my presentation.
Paul, do you want to show the elevations?
Sure. The applicant engaged the services of a architect to do some elevations of what the building would look like. On Old Country Way, these four buildings are the ones you would primarily see from the street, because these would actually block the view from Old Country Way. These buildings would be blocked with those buildings in front. And those buildings out at the front of the street, this is a front elevation, the only difference is you have two, two double doors next to each other as opposed to four doors here. There's a total of four doors on the front, and it'll be either this view or this view, but there'll be no parking in front of the building, it'll be a lawn area with some landscaping, so when you drive down the street, what you'll see is a building that looks very much like a home, with the premises.
Excuse me. We just got to wait the board, we'll, we'll get to the things.
And then the, in the backside of these buildings, which you wouldn't see from the street, there'd be some garage doors for the contractors, with some windows up on top. Both the right side and the left side of the building are, you know, are the same, they would have a total of three windows, one on the bottom and two up on the top.
Couple things just to add to that, that's all second. Any, these are, these are conceptual, it's part of the planning board process, after the design review committee, which gets into the knots and bolts and works and makes recommendations to the planning board. To answer Steve Montero's question, these are contractor shops. One of the things that Rob and Ben Proctor have determined since acquiring the property, there's a lot of need in the town for contractors, plumbers, electricians, carpenters, where particularly since the coming of the Green Bush line, a number of people have been displaced, a lot of them of which still haven't relocated back into town. And you can see on Ford Place, actually, there was all those different developments, that has been sold out pre-construction because it's a real need in the town of this. And apart from this, Rob and his son work on boats and antique cars and whatever, and at least two of these garages, they're using for their own benefit.
I have a couple questions.
Yeah, sure. My questions are about impervious pavement, permeable pavement. We got some information that permeable pavement may very well be just that, when it's installed, but that there's certain maintenance that is required, otherwise it could conceivably become impervious pavement. What's the plan to address that? Obviously, we don't want to approve something that's less detrimental, but then three years later it becomes more detrimental.
Let me ask you, before I turn this over to Greg and Paul, are you referring to the letter you received from the chairman of the Water Resources Committee?
Yes.
All right. First, I want to go on the record, the chairman of the Water Resources Committee issued a letter, and it's unfortunate that that was issued, is because the, my reading of the letter is that is the recommendation of the boss of the Water Resources Committee, and in fact, it is not. So, for the benefit of the doubt, the writer of this letter, I'll assume that she was confused, because amongst other things, the only time that there was any discussion, and it was very speculative and titular, and we haven't had an opportunity to appear there, but the minutes of the meeting reflect, there was no vote and no discussion taken on this, so I really don't know on what basis that she could write a letter to the, to this indicating that's a position of the board, because there's never been any action taken on it. But, with that said, why don't, Paul, you're going to explain this, or does Greg want to talk to the bridge?
Why don't you explain that? Greg Gansy, Ross Engineering. This material, permeable pavement, also known as, referred to as porous pavement, basically, it's a binder cores mix, without the fines and sands, and that's what gives it its porosity. Longevity is that of any other pavement mix? It's good for 20 to 30 years on average, and they've been used all across the country for a number of decades, 30 or 40 decades. And they have had studies done on them in the northern latitudes, the University of New Hampshire, for example, did a really nice study on it, and they found that when the snow is clear off this pavement, an hour later, and this was in some of the materials that were handed out, sun hits it and it melts. So the residual snow that's left on, behind on a conventional pavement, that needs to be de-iced or sanded, this, this material will, will draw that snow in through the crevices and dispose it through, through melting, especially when the sun hits the pavement, it heats up and it, and it's dissolved. The studies are indicating that there is approximately a 25 percent, or 75 percent reduction in sanding, and oftentimes, salt, I think, is not necessarily used, it can be, it's not recommended, but there are other additives that could be used for, for de-icing purposes, but generally speaking, it's really not needed anywhere near to the effect that it is, it's needed for a conventional pavement. Now what that means is that the pavement is less susceptible to clogging. The way this is designed is, when it rains, tributary areas off-site aren't going to be discharging onto this, this pavement, where you can have erosion and silts and fines getting onto the, onto the pavement. Again, that's going to reduce the susceptibility to clogging. The pavement will have to be maintained, it will have to be either swept or vacuumed once or twice a year, depending upon the traffic that goes on it. But, conventional pavements, oftentimes in an operations and maintenance program, they'll require sweeping at least once or twice a year on a conventional pavement, and that's because conventional pavements have catch basins that have sumps that get clogged. So, either way, the maintenance of a, of a conventional pavement and a permeable pavement are very much the same. Sometimes, leaves of a debris in the fall will fall on the pavement, they have to be picked up, but that can be done with a push broom and shovel, and then in the, in the next spring, your conventional mechanical equipment, either a vacuum truck or, or a mechanical sweeper will come in and sweep the lot, and the porosity of this pavement, according to studies, as long as it's, the general routine maintenance is done on it, it's going to, it's going to perform very well, even at the end of its life cycle, after about 30 years. If a contingency situation happens, maybe a truck discharges a load of sand on the, on the pavement, that, you know, something like that, the, the material would have to be removed, you can still do a deep clean of this, this permeable pavement, it would, it would involve a combination of power washing into this, into the pavement, and vacuuming and sucking up the, the fines from people within, and there's a process that would, that that would have to adhere to, you know, you'd have to spray it at, at an angle and suck it up, and, and carry along across the swath of the impacted area. Other than that...
Has this been used before in Situate, like stormwater management? And as a, the planning board put any regulations as far as maintenance and cleaning of it?
Well...
In with their...
I don't know.
Or a similar service, they make a concrete product that's the same thing.
We, the answer to that, Congressman, is that, yes, the town of Situate has used impervious pavements. One of the things, just to add to Greg's statement, is, one of the things in the, in the site plan review... plan review is always an operation and maintenance plan that's incorporated into that. In addition to that, we need a stormwater permit that's co-jurisdictional by both the planning board and the conservation. One of the questions, if I'm not mistaken, on the, if anyone knows this, someone might know, along the Driftway, the sidewalk on the Driftway, isn't part of that pervious pavement? Does anyone know that? Yes, the area where it is?
Just if you could just state your name.
My name's Mike Clark, went all through Stockbridge Road. I'm a member of the Water Resources Commission Committee. I'm not here on behalf of them, I just wanna make that point. I do not have a business relationship with the applicant or attorneys or the engineers. Just wanna make that clear. Reason I'm here is that I wanna make sure the discussion on the porous pavement is clear, okay? The town has installed at least two porous pavement installations. One is the parking lot by Dunkin' Donuts on the Driftway, those pavers are porous pavement. And then farther down on the Driftway, portion of the asphalt is porous asphalt. Those have not been maintained and they're still working well. I'm also a former member of the foundation, and they have approved several projects with porous pavement. Porous pavement is, I think one thing to talk about is if it's not maintained, there's a potential for clogging. But it does a great job on infiltrating stormwater, treating the stormwater, really reducing pollutants, and it's a green infrastructure technique. It's one of the techniques that's, that's the stormwater bylaw wants you to do as long as back development. So I just wanna make sure that as we talk about porous pavement and its effectiveness, that it gets a fair shake. Okay, I'm also a professional civil engineer too.
Thank you.
A couple more things. Just to go back to the correspondence that we did receive, I didn't read that correspondence to state that it was the position of the board. I think often there are applications before various boards of the town where a chair of another board is expected to or feels inclined to comment, and I think that's what happened here. I think that some people might disagree with those comments, but such is the nature of comments. My next question is, great, so the pavement's permeable. How does it compare to the lawn that we have on the site now? Is it just as permeable as the lawn? Is it 50% as permeable in its most maintained and best sense?
Well, does the water, I guess the question is, does the water 100% infiltrate and not go off the site? Is that the standard?
I am looking, we're being asked to conclude...
Sure, sure, but what I'm saying when you're asking that...
Yeah.
I think what you wanna know is rainfalls.
Rainfalls.
Does it percolate into the soil or does it go off site? Right? And what the question is...
To be honest, I'm more concerned with comparing the surface that you're gonna have on the site as proposed compared to what the surface on the site is now. If, for instance, if 40% of the site now is impermeable...
Correct.
And 60% is permeable grass...
Right.
And this is only half as permeable as grass, then maybe I question your numbers. If this is just as permeable as grass, then maybe I completely agree with your numbers or somewhere in the between. I'd just like to understand the comparison...
Paul, you wanna answer?
I'd say it's probably more permeable because you have more voids in there for the water to be accepted.
Just what's more permeable?
The pervious pavement.
Is more permeable than grass?
Because the lawn can be, you know, the lawn can have some loom in there that's got silt or till in there that's gonna hold the water longer. It'll still drain down a lot. But with the pavement, you know, it looks like popcorn a little bit.
Right.
Those voids are open, and you've got about two feet of stone gradation below that to accept all that. So once that water hits the pavement, it's gonna go down much quicker than it would in a lawn area because the finds in the lawn is loom in the soil particles are much closer together, which will hold the water longer than the pavement would.
When you first started to say that any form of pavement is more permeable than grass, I thought there's no way I'm gonna buy into what you said, but I follow you, and that seems to make some sense to me. Thank you for the explanation.
On the pervious pavement, the golf course parking lot, it's, the description you gave of permeable pavement, it sounds a lot like it. It's regrind and other materials that are not bound together in a solid form. Can anyone comment whether the golf course, the Widow's Brook, Widow's Walk is permeable or not?
Widow's Walk, I think it was like crusher on it they put down...
Yeah.
Which had larger stone...
Right.
...on the foundation finds unit. That point pavement is measured with a binder cores without the finds, which is your sand that's mixing with the asphalt and the bedoumen.
I guess what I, my impression at least of what was put down at Widow's Walk, and initially, I haven't played recently, but initially it included the cart tracks, was designed to be permeable. It was about being a green environment project, very friendly to the environment, got all sorts of national awards, if I recall, back 1980. And it was, I look at that parking lot, and it appears to me that it must be a permeable surface of some sort. I'm just curious if that's the kind of thing we're talking about. I understand yours is, you're talking about something probably even more properly engineered.
Exactly.
This one, I think, had a lot to do with reusing, regrind and materials as well as being permeable, but...
Is standards throughout the industry for how they make that mix at the plants? So it's a uniform mix no matter where you get it?
In addition to that, you're saying that there's two feet of stone underneath this pavement that will further wash and...
There's about two feet of different layers of stone and some specially processed gravel to accept the water. It also acts as a filtering agent, so when the water does go down below that, it's been filtered and treated, whereas with standard pavement, you wouldn't have that once it leaves the site. But everything will be treated here on site, and it'll all stay on site.
So what about the roof water too? Is that gonna be treated on site as well?
Yes, the roof water would actually be discharged directly out of the pavement.
Is it, so essentially what your proposal is, when you get to that point, all the water that falls onto the site will stay on the site?
Yes.
Okay.
That's also part of the stormwater bylaw, that you have no increase in volume leaving the site.
And just to, generally too, when you go to the stormwater bylaw, it's gonna be reviewed by another engineer that...
Yes.
This work is done or the calculations are done and things are correct.
It'll be a review.
And did you have anything else?
Not at the moment. I'm, I'd just like to comment for the audience, you've been very thoughtful about letting the board ask the questions and get the kind of facts on the table. Just a reminder that our recording secretary, Ms. Kelly, will be trying to write down what people have to say, if you could identify your names clearly, your address, each time you speak, even if you have a subsequent comment, because it's hard for her to look, to see who's speaking now and be writing at the same time. And as John said, all questions should go through the chair instead of direct interaction with the applicant. It just makes things much smoother. Trust me, I've seen it go both ways.
And then Ashley, do you have any? Bob, would you like to comment at this point?
Oh, John, I'm listening as we all are, so I have no comment at this particular point. Thank you.
We'll open it up to the audience then.
Good evening, folks. My name is Curtis Parker out of 26 Jenkins Place. I'm not in a butter, or I'm not in a butter to a butter. I've got a couple of issues I'd like to discuss about this that have to do with zoning. First of all, on sheet 53 up front, this is within the business zone. This property has never been business. Historically, 100 years ago, Jenkins Place and this area was part of the Fitz Mill property. The Fitz had this area, the entire Jenkins Place area, as broccoli and cauliflower fields. They brought folks in from the Azores, from the Cape Verde Islands 100 years ago to work the farms. They had buildings that were sort of dormitories for the folks that worked the farm for the spring, the summer, and the fall. In the fall, they went back to Cape Verde Islands. Eventually, these folks decided to buy the houses, build the houses. Jenkins Place was a little dirt road, and in the 1920s, the town straightened out and paved and made it into a real road. This property, all of the property here, went from farmland to residential. There's nothing about this property that's business. Although it is on the map as business, I have here my real estate property bill for the last couple of years. It says it is business zone, I'm sorry, it is residential zoning. I'm residential villain, class one. That's the first issue. Issue number two is the comment. This is a picture of this plan right here. The comment that this pipe right here is a culvert is incorrect. This red line that you see there is the clap brook. It is recognized by the conservation as a brook. At the end of Jenkins Place down here, at the end of the cul-de-sac, there's a little dirt road that goes down into the conservation area. That conservation area on the conservation maps is called the Hicks Swamp. From the Hicks Swamp, the clap brook feeds down onto part of the Fitz Mill property. It comes down behind my house over here, behind all of the property, up until it goes halfway across Jenkins Place, comes in around behind all of the houses here, goes down here and empties out into the reservoir. Well, when I moved in in 1992, this is a photograph, these are photographs of the back of my property line. In there are two 24-inch concrete pipes that were illegally placed in the brook in order to try to backfill. The neighbors say that this 24-foot, these 24-inch concrete pipes were illegally placed 50 years ago probably in order to make more land. This is not a storm drain, this is not a culvert, this is a recognized stream. This is a clap brook. I called, at 1992 when I moved in, I called conservation, I asked them what they were doing there. Eleanor Foley, that was the conservation agent at the town, town came down, saw these pipes in the stream and said, "What are they doing there?" And started yelling at me. I says, "I've been here for two months. That's your problem. What are those doing there?" She brought the DPU down, they removed those pipes. These pipes never should have been placed in there. Because of these pipes, the stormwater cannot run into the brook, it cannot replenish the aquifer, it cannot run into the stream. This is not a 150-foot buffer situation from the Water Conservation District. This is the Water Conservation District. This is a photograph, photographs in 1997 of the pipes removed. These pipes never should have been there, they were removed by the town. This is what it looks like now. Sorry, folks, this does not, I'm sorry, very sorry. This never should have been placed, this is not the buffer zone, this is the conservation area. Thank you.
The only thing I'd say is, just confusion, we stipulate, we're not saying, we're saying it is a tributary. If it wasn't, we wouldn't be here. So I didn't want you to misunderstand, all we're saying is that part of the stream is within a concrete pipe.
It never should have been.
Well, whether it should or shouldn't, I don't know. I wasn't alive there. But we stipulate that it is jurisdictional.
Just also, the initial question you had on the zoning, it is zoned for business? It has been, I don't know when it...
It isn't, the zoning isn't a function of what its form of use has been. When zoning was established in the town in the 50s, we established that there'd be certain parts of the town that would be used for residential, certain parts would have to have larger lots. The west end is a larger lot profile than around Lighthouse Point, for example. Mineet is larger lot profile. There are restrictions as to what can be done in residential zones. The business zones were specifically established to recognize areas that were currently business and areas that the town wanted to promote as business. We also created commercial zones that were designed, they were supposed to be for light commercial manufacturing along the Driftway. So these are, these underlying districts are what the town decided in their master planning of zoning to establish. It's not a function of what it has been. And residential is allowed in all the zones. You can, you can build a house in all the zones. You might not want to build a house in the commercial zone if right next door is an empty lot that could be turned into a small, light manufacturing facility, but it's in allowed use. So what we're talking about here is allowed uses in the zone. In terms of your tax bill, as I'm hearing you, you're being, you're being taxed for a use, which is residential use. That's not suggesting what zone your property is in, but what use it is currently under. The tax is built, is factored on what kind of structure is there, how it's built, what amenities it has, and what use it's done. So we're talking a couple of different things. I appreciate your comment that this has been agricultural and become residential, but the zone is the zone.
Okay. One more issue if we could mention, the village over by...
Name, just name.
Oh, I'm sorry, again, Curtis Parker, 26 Jenkins Place. Again, the alleged purpose for the village over by land is to increase the commercial real estate tax bill to situate the village area and to put in businesses that will attract people to the village to go to the merchants and increase business. If this property is built, currently there are two houses on there that pay real estate taxes at the residential rate. Those two houses are also low-income houses. If those two were ripped down, that would be two affordable houses that are gone that will make it necessary for the town to put in two more 40Bs. I would assume that this property, when it's done, would pay less real estate tax than the current two residences. Also, I feel that this will lower the property value of all the houses around it. That will now lower the value of the houses, that will then lower the real estate taxes that the town will pay. Nobody will come down there to do business with the merchants because there's nothing there that the merchants would ever wanna, nobody would go down there to buy a submarine sandwich or whatever they're gonna do for the merchants. That'll become a dead zone. I'm sure that the town bylaws require certain lighting for this parking lot. That is gonna create...
Light pollution.
Light pollution for these neighbors. There are neighbors, 365 degrees around there, residents there. These are, these are not commercial people everywhere around it, even in the triangle here where John Dennehy has his office. I looked at that house 27 years ago to buy it, it was out of my price. That was strictly residential at the time. If Mr. Dennehy decided he wanted to get out of there, that could go residential immediately. This property is 360 degrees surrounded by residences. This does not belong in this neighborhood. This belongs on the Driftway behind Dunkin' Donuts where there is plenty of space down there to put in this type of a facility. Also...
You've got several questions, but...
Okay, this is one more. This will be my last. Approximately 15 years ago, Stephen DeJauland bought the property next to me, my 26 Jenkins Place. Place. He attempted to put in a similar installation. That wasn't even on top of the clap brook. That was within the setback. It was turned down just because it would, they were talking about putting in some type of a garage. That would have polluted the groundwater for the brook that would have brought it into the town reservoir. This doesn't belong there. In the town bylaws, it shows on 520.5, all things that are disallowed within this area. Washing an automobile, a car that's shot with paint, all of these things that they're going to put on there are not allowed on 520.5. Thank you so much.
They haven't said what they're putting on there, but that's all.
Yeah, just respond in brief, a couple things. One, we're not proposing any uses that aren't allowed uses, that's number one. Number two, I can't respond to anecdotal things, so I won't attempt to, all right? Three, the actual purpose of the Village Overlay District, and again, it's an overlay district, you can either proceed under the other line of zone, which we do, or you can proceed under the overlay district. But contrary to the prior speaker said, the purpose of the Village Overlay District is to bring residential housing to the business district. That's the purpose because the first floor use is already allowed uses. So it's the opposite of actual willingness of percentage, that's all.
And then, just to, a business going in and thereby reducing the value of someone's home is unfortunate, and it's not something that's lost on this board. It is also not something this board has the power to stop in many instances. And, you know, I think that's something that we all want people to appreciate. There are many things that may be in varying layers of dispute here. One of them is not whether or not a business is allowed on this piece of property. For better or worse, that's the zoning code in the town.
Just a minute, Steve, did you say--
Yeah, I have to beg to differ--
Steve, Steve--
Disagree. Steve Montero, 9 Jenkins Place. William, you said, I think you stated 44% is impervious surface. I have photographs here, and I would say it's a lot less than that. I mean, I have photographs here, I don't know if the board has been by the property. And also, there is also a, has to be a 150-foot buffer in front of the property, which the clap brook runs across Old Country Way and in fact empties over by John's property, the lawyer's property. So that's on the other side of the property. In addition to what Mr. Curtis has just stated about it running along the corner of the property. I'm one of many people here, neighbors from Green Bush and also up around Country Way. And I have signatures from a number of other people that couldn't make it tonight. What you're doing here, what you've already done in the Green Bush area, John, your structures as well as the brewery, from Thursday to Sunday, there are times you can't even get down the street. I came home around one Thursday night and I couldn't even get down the street because there was a tractor trailer making a delivery to the brewery. Could not get down the street, parked there. I mean, I had to end up going around. This facility and what has already happened, people were upset in Green Bush, okay? It seems like we just like to be afforded the same respect that other communities and situated afforded. This smack dead in the middle of our community, it doesn't go. There's little kids, grandkids and children, it's a hazard. And I'll tell you, Curtis, myself, and Mr. TK, we made a number of phone calls to the police and the fire department, there's safety issues. And we documented the days and times that we called. Because God forbid, if somebody gets hurt down there, we're going to have it documented. The Patriot Ledger was already down, and they're going to do an article, and the Boston Globe is already interested, they want to see what transpires here. But wiping out this neighborhood, a neighborhood that's been here for 100 years, close to 100 years, I'm third generation here, and a lot of the folks here are second and third generation. I mean, things have gone on in that neighborhood where no, not one person showed up. You can see here. And it's not just in Jenkins Place and in Green Bush proper, it's around the corner. We've got some people here from Country Way, up the road, and the next street over. They've had, they've had enough. Kids can't even ride their bikes down there anymore because of all the trucks on, in all the storage areas on Union Road, you know, Union Street. It's, in the bylaws, it says that these projects will not be detrimental to the neighborhood. This is definitely smack dead in that neighborhood. And I'm a, I'm a butter. My property runs the whole back end of that. And frankly, I don't want to have to come out and be subjected to more noise, fumes, and pollution that's already now happening currently in Green Bush. With all the trucks and all the storage, I mean, you know, you're looking at making an industrial park in the middle of the neighborhood. It doesn't go there. I mean--
My name is Renee--
If we could just go one at a time, but--
Oh, I just wanted to back up what you said.
One at a time, one at a time.
We can answer then--
I want to answer Steve's question. Just one question I can't answer, Steve. Paul, did you survey and engineer to determine the amount of existing impervious surface?
Yes.
Okay, so that's engineered and surveyed.
I would like to see that because--
Yeah, go on the point.
I've got photographs here that doesn't even come to look close to that.
But I think, Steve, some of the-- No, no, I understand your point. I think some of the, the new pavement would be pervious. So that won't count as impervious surface. The new impervious surface would be the roof areas on the new plan.
The increase in roof.
The increase there. The existing areas of roof and concrete would be impervious. So those are the measurements that add up.
Yeah. And the second answer I just wanted to have was Steve, was health, safety, lighting, fumes issues are all obviously very extremely important issues. Those were all addressed at the site plan. This is not why we're here today. We're not here to ask to build these buildings, what the lighting's going to be, where, which is going to be proposed, we vote Old Country Way, the turning point is towards Country Way, we've already talked about it, heard some concern, so it's not going into the neighborhood. But those are all things that aren't before this board. So I recognize this impacts the neighborhood, but that's not what we're asking this board to do.
Just to, sometimes it's good you guys hear it from us as well. I have to say, I agree with that wholeheartedly. Important questions being raised, many of which will be addressed, hopefully very well and very thoroughly, at other hearings. The safety, the traffic, the lighting is simply not before us. I'm not the right person to make that vote. These two gentlemen, at least in the capacity they're sitting here tonight, are not the right people to make that vote. It doesn't mean they're not valid, and it doesn't mean necessarily that they won't be well heard. But there, there is a, this is a step in their process, there are many more steps. And those concerns, while valid, are, the majority of them were not what's before us tonight.
And very specifically, we are, we are looking at a very specific part of this application. What's being proposed is theoretical, hypothetical, what could go on that property? If it were to be developed in a fashion like this with the permeable material, can we make a finding that it's not significantly different from what was existing? It's a much bigger process about the questions you guys are raising now. We can appreciate them, but at the same time, we have to act within the boundaries of what our requirements are. If we are, if we were to find differently than what is our opinion of what the law would state, would require us to do, then the applicant's in a position to be able to appeal us. And if the court finds differently, then it comes back to us and they say, "We don't agree with you, change your ruling to what we agree with." So it isn't an emotional thing, it can't be an emotional thing for us. It has to be very much, what are the facts before us that lead us to our conclusion or not? The site plan, it's going to be very interested in the kind of comments you're having about impacts, because that's where, that's where it's most appropriate.
These people here expecting their quality of life.
Right, exactly. Who do we talk to regarding the environment, the smog, all the traffic? And I have grandchildren--
They're going to find this John.
No, no, we have questions.
Renee Montero, 9 Jenkins Place. I have grandchildren, I was at that house, in that house for 49 years. I now have grandchildren, okay? A lot of these other people have grandchildren that play on, in the street, which they're allowed to. Anything happened to my grandchildren or any children would be awful, okay? Putting a business in a residential area is horrible. I, I know. I want to know who do I talk to regarding the environment, the smog, because I have medical conditions concerning that. Who do I talk to regarding that and all the safety?
The next, if, if they proceed to the next step after this, they will go in front of the Conservation Commission, they will go for a site plan review with the planning board. And during the site plan review, they'll review the stormwater systems that'll be tested, they'll have questions about parking, lighting, traffic, all, a lot of those--
And all the smog.
The design of the building, so that will be the area where those concerns will be raised, addressed, and looked at.
Just so we're clear, I don't think what we're telling you is that there's going to be questions about whether or not a business is allowed on this piece of property. It is. It's, it's the most cut and dry question before us tonight. Whether or not you folks would like to see the zoning bylaw changed for future undeveloped or not yet a business lots, there's a process which is, has more than one step in it where we could talk about, not we, but the town could talk about changing that, but that's a process. Right now, you're allowed to build a business on a piece of property in this zone.
How do we get that process started? How do we get it started?
You're talking about changing the zoning code, involving town meeting and several--
Exactly. And also like the environment, okay, and the safety.
A lot of that is going to be addressed at further hearings for this application in front of other boards.
All right, so how do we start the zoning to make--
It would require an article at town meeting. There had been, there had been zoning board, zoning bylaw review committees in the past that have looked at zoning bylaws to clean them up, to readdress them. But it would require a change at town meeting, primarily.
When is the next town meeting?
It's a, it's a process, there's one in the spring, but it, there's a, it's a process that would have to get started, it would require public signatures, signatures from registered voters. It would require a vote at the town meeting to support it, and then it would have to be approved by the Attorney General, I guess.
There are--
It's a long process.
In the town bylaws, much of which is available online, there is some information as to that process. It's a complex process that we don't have time to get into tonight, and to be honest, I'm not sure that this board should be advising you on necessarily.
So it's not with the signatures in the springtime, they'll be voting, okay, because I would really like to get this started.
I understand.
Joseph Andrade, 27 Jenkins Place Citra. My parents bought that in 1978. I bought it about 15 years ago, and I just built a house. I'm at the end of Jenkins Place, the last house on the left, can't go any further, that's it. I built a new house. I have two pumps that run non-stop. What I mean non-stop, you can come by anytime you want, just stop, you'll see it running non-stop because of the brook. The brook goes behind Curtis's house, comes over Jenkins Place, goes behind her house, goes down the street, and I have a pipe, just me and Walter Barrows, that passed away, and my two houses that sit on that lot, we're the only ones that have two catch bases that go to the brook. I'm always at the brook trying to clear it and get the water out of there that goes behind this property here. If you see how much debris is there, I can't get rid of the water. Breen, I've been to DPW, this is my last straw, it's been three years. I can't even pour my foundation floor yet. That's how much water problem I have. And you're telling me once this is developed, where's all that water going? I can't even get rid of what I already have at the end of the street, and you're telling me all their water's going to disappear?
Yeah, and to my problem.
This is my problem. Let's not talk about the lights, the pollution, all that. I can't even pour my foundation floor. Three years later, I'm still waiting to pour a floor, and I can't. So this is very important to me because I want to finish my project that I started three years ago. I want to move into my new house, and I can't. And I see nothing but problems with this being built with all that extra water. Where's it going to go? And I can't even get rid of mine. So that does work. That brook is just for me. Manny, all them, they're connected to the town sewer, that water just disappears. Me, I'm stuck. All that water just sits back there and has got nowhere to go. Michael Ball gets out of his truck, he looks down, he goes, "Chill, this whole street's floating." The water's right up to the top of the catch basin. It doesn't even move.
Two feet of water in the brook right now, don't they?
Yeah, it's just all the two feet of water in that whole brook, and it hasn't rained in how long? That's, that's the only issue I have right now. I need to, we need to address that. We need to figure out how we're going to get rid of that water and have that brook work the way it used to when I was a kid. I used to jump from, from next door to her house, my grandmother lived there, that's where I used to jump. It'd be dry as can be. There'd be turtles there, would crawl through those, those pipes that he's talking about because you don't know, you weren't there, I can tell you I was there. I crawled through it as a kid and come all the way up the other end. That's how bone dry it was. Even though I grew up on Park Ave, my father bought Curtis's house and the two that I own now. And I would literally crawl through there, through that whole piping that they got rid of by Curtis's, it would crawl all the way down and come out right on, right on the other side of Dennery's office, that's where we would come up. Now you can't even get rid of the water. And every time you build, I don't care where you say, the water's going to go somewhere. No matter what you're building, it's going to go somewhere.
Just, just in brief, just I need to be reverbive, but there's a stormwater bylaw that ensures that it is against the law for any water to come off of this site even where it presently exists. And that's a process with the Conservation Commission and the Stormwater Authority that we're going to. And if we don't need that, which our engineers have already viewed it, they've already designed it, then we can't build anything here. But again, that is not why we're here tonight. Sorry.
Just, some other people haven't had a chance yet, if you'd like to.
Yeah, I have a question and a comment.
Name and, name and address.
Sorry, Sharon Harrington, 15 Jenkins Place. I think I'm in a butter to a butter, but I may be in a butter. The question is, I heard the statement about grandfathering the building. From what I understand about grandfathering is you don't knock down a building and then claim grandfathering. And it sounds like what the building is going to be done is knock down and then put a new one in. So how do you grandfather that?
Well, I, one of the main question we're being asked tonight is whether what is proposed is substantially more detrimental than what exists. And so that gets into your question. They're not allowed to knock down the building and build anything because a building is there. We're being asked to determine whether what they plan to build is substantially more detrimental than what is already there and has the benefit of that grandfathering that you're referring to.
So once they knock it down, it doesn't matter? So, so, once they knock it down, it doesn't matter?
Wait, it was, I think it was a little bit misunderstood. The question of grandfathering, we use that not in a, as a term of art, but as a term of, for lack of a better term.
Yeah.
What we were, what we were trying to arrive at is the question of, can we actually do work within a hundred and fifty foot of a tributary? The applicant has stated that because this work was done, there was work done on that site prior to the adoption of that bylaw, then it can, it can be a developed lot. If this law were undeveloped and that bylaw was adopted, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's your presentation, if, then it couldn't be, there could be no construction done on the lot because it was in proximity to the tributary. The issue here is just that, um, if, you can't do any work, if you can't move a spade of soil within a hundred and fifty foot of the tributary, um, then this project's dead in the water because there's nothing we can do. However, if we were to view that, um, bylaw in that way, nobody within a hundred and fifty foot of the tributary could move a spade of dirt. So, clearly, that's not an appropriate interpretation of the bylaw. The, if this, if an applicant were coming to us to take down these two houses, which they're non-conforming because there's two houses on one lot, two residences and dwellings on one lot, to put a single residence on that lot, it would be kind of a slam dunk because it's clearly less intense. It's, it is a residential use in a business zone which is allowed by law, by zoning. So, that's, the grandfather thing, I think, is a little bit of a, was not intended as misdirection, but I think it was, um, perhaps being misunderstood.
And the comment, thank you for that, and the comment that I would like to make is it also talks about twenty-one to twenty-four parking spaces where vehicles would be dripping, whatever they do drip, into the trajectory area. That's more vehicles on that little lot than on all of my street.
Okay. So, we talked about.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maria Marcelino. Um, I actually live at thirty-three Garden Road, although my father is at Three Union Street. So, I'm the daughter of, not a butter, I guess. May I approach? Okay, so I grew up in the neighborhood also. And so, I don't know if you know, but, okay, so we talked about the detriment to the neighborhood. So, my parents are here, on this corner here, on this street here, there's one house, two houses, there are some homes down here. This is a very crazy corner. I don't know if you've ever seen school buses try to wing it.
Yeah.
Um, so, and then this is a short distance. We used to play right here, in this little waterway, where the pipes come out. We would jump the brook. We did what we did because we were boys and girls. Down here is where the, um, the brewery is. I've talked to Sean Cashman with the Fire Department. He's like, "This is the craziest thing. Nobody fought it, it got approved." So, now you have all of these people parking out here every Thursday to Sunday with their children. They park on this road, they park here, they park here. Now you want this kind of traffic coming in here? These are all, it's an older community. And that's a detriment to the community, this community. My parents have grandkids, and hopefully not time soon, but we'll have good grandkids one day. And so, the worry is that then what do you do? We can put up signs, we can tell people not to park. We actually put out cones so that the brewery people, the drunk, don't come and park. Now you're acting this traffic around this corner where the school buses used to try to come here and have difficulty, because that's the school bus. So, tell me that that's not a detriment. So, if it's a detriment, we can't do it, right?
That's what, again, that, that portion of the detriment might not be just here today, but it will.
Very good.
Hi, Tom King, sixteen Jenkins Place. I'm not sure if I'm a butter of, in a butter of Stevie, but, um, my question is about the, um, fancy new pavement, or, I guess, really old pavement, unless, that was a misstatement because thirty to forty decades is, that's been around for three to four hundred years?
No, thousand.
Has it? Is this gentleman I'm on to, it was his comment? Has that been around that long, or was that a misspeak?
I'm sure it was a misspeak, he wasn't here four hundred years ago.
Okay, so, so it's.
No, I think the life expectancy was thirty years.
Yeah, but no, he said they've been using this for thirty to forty decades. So, I couldn't believe it. But it also seems to me they're covering this entire property with either tar or this stuff. And then they're counting, if I'm not correct, the runoff that comes from all the roofs that goes into that has also pervious, or whatever we would say for non-impervious?
It, it's treated from the roof into the, into the groundwater now. It, it's not allowed to run onto the street or neighbor's property.
Does it go into this, um, whatever this fancy new pavement is?
Yes, underneath the pavement.
Okay, so, that whole equation, other than tar, everything that's being considered pervious, staying pervious here, is all the water coming off the roofs, going into these small patches of this fancy new stuff that we have to assume is gonna absorb it all, do it all. And then on top of that, what happens if water runs off of that from somebody's antifreeze and everything? I know Stevie's property is not in a culvert, if they call it that, but it's an open stream and it's within a hundred and fifty feet of that.
Back one.
Here.
Yes, right there.
And it's open, so you've got an open stream right there.
We need to, we need to limit the conversation.
I, I think it's kind of a little bit of funky math to put all of that water into this system. Now, I know the gentleman spoke to it, it's green, it's environmental and everything, but it seems to me there's very little of it that's gonna be doing a whole lot of work. And, um.
Again, a lot of it is under.
Is there engineering that proves what this is capable of?
Yes, there, there is, and a lot of it's underground, but also, when they go to the stormwater bylaw, their engineering that they've submitted will be reviewed by another engineer that is high by the town, and, and they'll, they'll confirm or deny or change.
But that's after you guys say okay.
What we're saying okay to tonight is, we're not issuing the stormwater permit tonight.
Yeah.
So, valid questions reviewed by folks who have the authority and are more qualified to review it than us.
It sounds like everything's gotten swayed from anything emotional from all of, raise your hands if, if you're here for this property, guys.
Right. I, I think one of the things that's important is, this is their first application and their first appearance before a board. So, it makes sense that all of these folks are here tonight, and it makes sense that they want to express all of their concerns, and I think hopefully that's evident because we're willing to hear all of their concerns, even though many of them are not before us tonight. And so, I think this is another instance of that.
Yeah.
Which, again, we're happy to hear, but we would like you to understand.
So, I, that's what I'm saying, I think they're basing that all on something where you're supposed to believe is scientifically possible from this system. And on top of that, it seems that we should also be here talking about a use which will not substantially be more detrimental to the neighborhood. And I think that gets expressed in all this other emotion about safety, light pollution, everything, that's detrimental to this neighborhood.
So, just to go back to that for a second, our reviewing whether or not a use was substantially more and less detrimental to a neighborhood would be a question before us if this use was not allowed by the bylaw in this neighborhood. This use is allowed by the letter of the bylaw, so whether we think it's more detrimental or not, doesn't matter. We don't get to vote on whether we think a business should go in this spot. The bylaw says it can.
It would be different if it was a non-conforming use. Let's say that there was a, a junkyard here, which is not allowed, and someone wanted to change the junkyard into a stable, which I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess maybe is allowed, but, um, but let's say it was a stable and, in fact, the stable was not allowed. We could make a judgment whether the junkyard to the stable was a reasonable change and less non, less non-conforming or less detrimental to the neighborhood and not any more detrimental. But in this case, both the existing use and the proposed use are allowed by zoning. That's, again, not really before us. I completely, we all completely agree with the comments being made, understand the comments being made. To your point about the pervious, impervious, et cetera, a large portion of this existing, this lot as it exists, is covered with impervious material, asphalt and concrete. That portion, um, that's all going to be removed, making it pervious. The part that will be impervious is the difference between the existing roofs of the structures and the proposed roof area of the structures. That material, that water is impervious because it can't come through the house. It's going to be re-diverted onto the lot. The applicant said it was going to be diverted to an area, a recharge system under the pavement. It's not gonna be spraying out over the pavement. And that's all going to have to be laid out clearly, um, in a, in a final plan with the stormwater management.
Is that a system, or is that just a drainage?
I don't know that they've even designed it yet, but it's, it's a system by which this will be all taken care of, to the satisfaction of the stormwater management.
Okay, well, lastly, I would say, when they talked about the uses, and Curtis mentioned no cow washing and things like that, this, they said these would be like for contractors in boats and antiques, does, does that include painting, chemicals and things like that?
There are restrictions in the, there are restrictions in the bylaw saying what you can do for the spray painting or different type of functions that you can't do or, uh, there, so, uh, that will be restricted.
Right, plumbers, chemicals, things like that. Different contractors would use.
Well, a certain amount of plumbers couldn't use the storage of materials and stuff, but again, it's, uh, so that's allowed, but again, I, I know it speaks to cab, spraying of cabinets, uh, something like that, or spraying of paint, it's not allowed.
Okay, well, thank you.
I have one question.
Just. Name.
Steve Montero, fifteen Jenkins Place, drawing the normal.
I know. It's not for me.
It's just for practical purposes.
This gentleman is here for variance.
No, they're now variance?
No.
If it was a variance, we probably wouldn't be even here, because we don't, very, variance is a very high standard, and we very rarely give them.
Different standards.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm actually new to this process. You know, I, I, I think the people here, and I could speak for anyone here, not to repeat myself, but, uh, we're tired of the things that have gone on in our neighborhood. We're all taxpayer and citizens. And, uh, no matter what you say, what this is zoned for, this is detrimental to the neighborhood. You know, and I border this. I don't think any one of yous here would like this in, in the middle of your neighborhood, okay? And, you know, it's, 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 it's not right. And these people are not gonna go away. I mean, they're gonna voice their opinions, like I said, taxpayer and citizens. Most of them have been here two or three generations. And, uh, this, this is not right. I think the things that have gone on down there, I'm not sure how the, how the brewery got passed and everything, things like that, but, uh, there's a lot of talk around how things like that get done in this town. And, uh, and, and people have had enough of it, you know? It's like, nobody cares about our, uh, life down there, our quality of life. And I think everybody here can attest to that. It's, and, and it has to stop somewhere. Twenty-four parking spaces in my backyard.
Again, the parking hasn't been approved, and it will not be approved here tonight. And just to respond, because this is something I know I take seriously, and I think the entire board does. We appreciate that you don't want this in your backyard, and I'm not saying I would want it in my backyard, but the fact of the matter remains that these gentlemen, or any property owner, is allowed to use their property for any use that doesn't run afoul of the zoning bylaw. This use does not run afoul of the zoning bylaw. Even if we agreed with you and wanted tonight to stop them from using it for this use, we would be out of line, and they would pursue us in court, and if we voted to stop this for those reasons, they would win. And all we would do is delay them a little bit and cost the town a lot of money. It's important to be aware of that. There are questions which are before us, which we take very seriously. There are other things which, if you feel it's unfortunate that a business use is allowed on this site, I'm not going to disagree with you, but it is right now. That's the law right now, and we have no power whatsoever to change it.
Our voices have to be heard sooner or later.
And you, you, I heard you, I promise I did.
I mean, that's the amount of people I have up until now.
Any, any other questions, who've, just, I, anyone that hasn't spoken yet that needs as a question? Curtis, if you want.
Curtis Parker, twenty-six Jenkins Place, one more zoning issue. Currently, today, on sheet fifty-three of the plans out in the front hall, the building on the left, which is called Lot One, has seventeen thousand and sixty-five square feet. The lot on the right has, uh, twelve thousand one hundred and ninety-three feet. Running down the middle is a property line. Somebody's gonna build something, they have to set back from that property line, I think, eight feet. There should be sixteen feet in between these, uh, the building on the left and the building on the right. They're gonna try to make this into one piece of property, even though that same person owns it.
It, it, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna ask you, I appreciate what you're trying to suggest, but if an individual buys two lots, they have a right to join them as one lot. The, it, lot lines are divi, are decided by the property owner. The property owner wants to subdivide his property, as long as he does it within the zoning, they can subdivide the property. If it, if they buy adjoining property and want to merge it as a much larger lot in order to not have, you know, as you say, a, a artificial line down the middle of the, if, if you, we went by your logic, we'd be in a situation where someone buys two small houses, they want to take the two small houses down, merge the lots, and put a larger house across the center of the lot. They couldn't do it without putting a sixteen-foot, um, divi, division between their, in the middle of the house. No one wants to go from the bedrooms to the living room of a sixteen-feet unless you're in Florida, uh, or Hawaii. So, it's just not, it's not a practical argument. It, this, this is, the engineered plan before us is stamped by an engineer, we have to go by that, that expertise and licensure. It tells us the lot size, it tells us where the existing structures are, where the hypothetically proposed structures are, because that, we're not in a position to approve that, we're just approving a conceptual idea. And we kinda have to accept it all, we don't, kinda, we gotta, there's no alternative.
One more issue. Now, in the, I've got four pages of town bylaws about what can be built within the, uh, the protection zone. Who is going to monitor what these eight tenants do in that property? In the bylaws, it says that they can't, nobody can paint. If they do paint, they have to put a high-tech circular, circulation system in to take the fumes out of the air so they don't go down into the ground. In twenty years, some person is gonna decide they wanna have a detail in shot there. They'll, twenty years later, nobody here will be around to, to monitor or police it. Who's gonna prevent them, a kid from putting in a detail in shot, washing cars, it'll go down into the ground. That'll be important. This, uh, this property owner will probably sell it after the whole project is done. Three properties owners later, who is gonna police anything?
I, I would just be careful about what we're saying about the.
I can answer your question.
Yes.
Your answer's very simple, we have a code enforcement officer in town. The, that position, whomever is in it in twenty years, will have the responsibility to respond to, um, a complaint that something's happening. We don't have the capacity to go around and check what's going on on every individual's property all the time, but if there is a complaint, the code enforcement officer investigates it, identifies whether it is in a violation of zoning, and, um, issues a cease and desist or whatever, takes whatever proper action is before them. If someone doesn't agree with the code enforcement's officer's decision, um, they can appeal it to this board, whoever's sitting on it in twenty years, and there is a public discussion about, about whether it's a violation. If it is a violation, it stops. It is enforceable, and it is enforced. It happens all the time.
If a carpenter spills a gallon of paint thinner on the ground, he's not gonna call the D E P and say, "Oh, I spilled a gallon of paint thinner." Who's gonna pull his head?
We appreciate the hypotheticals.
Thank you for your listening, we folks appreciate.
I just have another, Maria Marcelino, thirty-three Garden Road. So, I have another question. If, say, if the police department or the fire department finds that that intersection, if the ground is not stable enough because it's not accustomed to that kind of traffic, it's not accustomed to, um, work trucks coming into that area, it's certainly not that number of spots, that number of work trucks, could the fire department say that this is not?
Actually, the, the fire department will be reviewing the plans as part of the, uh, planning board cross-site plan review, so that it's sent over to, I think it's, uh, Officer Elliott there, so he'll, he'll review that for width of driveways, subo pavement and those type of things that they get their vehicles in there, whether it's a fire truck or ambulance or whatever might need to be. So, they, they do look at it and send their approval. They have, in the past, you know, made changes or request changes so that they, they have a. or whatever might need to be. So, they do look at it and send their approval. They have, in the past, you know, made changes or request changes so that they have a code they go by as well.
And then who incurs the cost? Because as a town resident, I certainly don't want to incur the cost of fixing that area to accommodate.
No, that's done in the, by the applicant at the time of the plan if changes need to be made.
And then in addition to, like, if there's a ton of traffic, my parents are elderly, they're in their eighties, my mom is severely asthmatic, and she's an Alzheimer's patient, my father has chosen to keep her at home because he loves his wife, and so he takes good care of her, but the reality is that my mom gets out. We're on the corner of Two Dead End Street, so guess what? Anybody in the neighborhood that sees my mom, you all know my mom, they will kindly lock her home. There's that, I mean, aren't those taken into consideration? I know that's an emotional thing, I look, I'm all about business. I mean, I, you know, have two kids to pay to school, so guess what? I'm all about business, but respecting that, I feel like this is a detriment to the neighborhood. Just that, and I get it, it's diszone, like, can we talk about what kind of businesses? Like, when we were talking about, like, a little beauty shop or a sub shop, something that's more neighborhood friendly?
It is, we can't really talk about it because it's defined in the bylaws. What's allowed is allowed.
Business use is defined down to certain subcategories, and reasonable minds differ on what's good in certain areas, and it's, you make good points, but a business doesn't have to be a bad neighbor, and, you know.
And again, if they, or when they, if they continue by us and according to the planning board, a lot of those issues will be raised carefully and thought of, and you've got again, a site plan review, usually they've got to go design review, so they kind of have an idea what the buildings can go flex, so there's further questions and steps that they're going to have to take in this process, as far as where the buildings might be today, and, you know, that might change as well. Again, the fire department would say, no, you know, remove this over here, we need more space, or we need more room over here, or no, we need less parking spaces, we need more, so that is all, again, to get to address a little further down the road. Tonight, we're kind of looking at the allowed use in the pervious pavement and what the detriment is to that in particular.
I have a question. Steve Montero, nine Jenkins Place. The Old Open Bucket Pond and Tributaries Clap Brook are a water resource as listed in the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Now, will they be contacted about this plan?
The water resource will be, as well as conservation, so yes, they'll have a crackhead, as they say, as well.
I think Environmental Protection, probably outside this town, if you remain aware of this.
Steve, I'm sorry, I just want to comment, you've suggested a couple of things that, like, just saying that outside this town, or we don't know how that got done, and how did that get approved. I feel a little uncomfortable with that kind of statement, because I don't believe...
Imagine how we feel.
And, excuse me, I don't believe that there's any underhanded aspects to the projects which you cited and talked about. We, all of our boards meet in public, that's required. Any possible conflicts of interest have to be disclosed. We are, we have a business district in Green Bush, it exists. We did not create it ourselves, we, I will say, I have been at town meetings when zoning has been altered, I don't know when the business district extended into this area, but it was not done in the dark, it was not done, it was done by a vote of the town. One thing I can say is that it continues to be frustrating at the few residents who show up to town meetings to vote on these things, but that's where the decisions are made for the town. What we have to do is enforce those decisions made by the town. The brewery, as an example, is in, is properly zoned, it was properly constructed, it came before us, we had certain decisions we had to find, certain findings we had to make regarding that application, and it was approved. We don't have the ability to deny it because we don't like it, or, and I'm not suggesting that I didn't like the brewery, I'm not suggesting I don't like this, I'm here to hear the facts so that I can decide, according to the bylaws and according to the wishes of the town, who voted those bylaws, and that's where it goes back to. What we, as a board, must decide. We cannot arbitrarily decide against an applicant. The applicant then just goes to court on us, and we have been overturned a couple of times, sometimes, very rarely, but occasionally we have made a judgment because we thought it was safer to err in that direction. And almost every time we have made what we thought was a safer judgment, we were overturned. The, most often, we are not even appealed, because we try to make the right decision based on the bylaw. Again, this application before us right now is very defined. What they're asking is, help me out here, why, I barely wonder why you're before us, I mean, except that, except that the pre-existing is non-conforming.
The answer is an abundance of caution. And the answer is...
So, the planning board doesn't say no, and you try to go before them?
Right.
I mean, for many of the, what's being asked of us is simply to say, yeah, the bylaw, the zoning bylaws suggest that this is an allowed use in this area, and kind of that's it. If, there isn't a, any, to me, there isn't anything glaring here that says, come here. I mean, it's the planning board that has most of the decision over how this property can be developed. We're only looking at the zoning aspect of it, so that the applicant has that kind of under their belt.
Appreciate it.
But the planning board meeting will also be a public hearing, and even more interesting, the planning board are elected officials in the town. We're appointed, we're appointed by the Boards of Selectmen, and we're up for reappointment on every three years, and right now we have two openings, and would love to have another member, or we have one opening, but we'd love to have another member, because we had a member die over six months ago now.
Yeah.
And we haven't gotten anyone to replace that person. We're in need of another member on this board. We don't operate in the dark, and nothing's getting done behind your back. I appreciate, we're not always happy with what's done, but it's what the bylaws require.
What's bylaw, in section six? Joseph Ibradi, 22 Jenkins Place.
That's a state law, forty-eight.
What is it?
It's a forty-eight.
What's it named?
It's a state law that allows for reconstruction of pre-existing non-conforming, it's, that's the grandfathering part. It really doesn't have anything to do with this application, but it's, when we have applications before, sometimes it's cited. I don't think there's any aspect of this application that it involves. But for example, it means that if you have a lot, a house on a lot that's smaller than allowed by law now, you can't be, your right to take that house down and put a new house in, if the board approves it, if this board approves it, can't be infringed upon, because that would be a taking of land without...
So, this property doesn't stay on that forty-eight?
That law, that law is not being imposed here, it's not, it's not being applied.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
I'm not an attorney.
I think it is, a little bit.
Okay, but I'm not an attorney.
If it wasn't for some, some thought of grandfathering, then the buffer zone would apply.
Correct, in that sense, but is that forty-eight, section six?
I would have to go back and look, gentlemen, don't answer.
But I agree with you.
It's my house, that's what happened, you guys made me give up five feet to my neighbor, because I had two houses on one lot, but it was pre-existing.
Right.
But this is two houses on one lot, but they're changing it totally. I just wanted to build a house to live in.
Changing it totally to a use that's allowed under the bylaw, and in that sense, any form of grandfathering or forty-eight, section six would not apply.
The grandfathering here is just about whether or not this lot can even have a spade of dirt turned on it, and because it has pre-existed, the applicant is proposing that it can.
Okay. Quickly, Tom Keenan, sixteen Jenkins Place, if it seems like only the adverse effect to this street is something you can use to stop it, would you please do it? We're all about saves.
If we can, all right. Any other questions?
Steve.
Last.
Steve Montero, nine Jenkins Place. At what point does, in the bylaws, nine fifty point three, the secret of the zoning bylaw, A, the specific site is an appropriate location for the use or structure, B, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, C, there will not be undue nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians as a result of the proposed use or structure?
That's, that, all of that is under granting a special permit. This doesn't require a special permit, this is allowed by right under the zoning bylaw. There are, there are times when we have, when an applicant is before us to, to make use of a piece of property that is not zoned for that particular purpose, and then they look, but it is allowed under a special permit to be used for that particular purpose. Then they come to this board to ask for that special permit, then they have to say, okay, I can't do this on my own without your permission, but if you give me a special permit, I can do it, and these are the reasons I think that's allowed. In this case, it's allowed by the bylaw, the bylaw says they can do what they're asking to do. We aren't issuing a special permit here. That's, that's another part of what we do. I can go into lots of examples of special permits, but that, this isn't one of them.
So, this isn't a special permit?
No, this is purely, they want to use, they want to do something with a piece of land that they own, that is allowed by the bylaws, in a zone that allows it, and that's not the question before us. I mean, I, I don't mean to sound flippant at all, but when we've had applications before us, where a large part of the community abutting the property has come before us in other applications, I frequently have said, it's their property, they can do with it what the bylaw says. If you don't want it done, don't have, don't have them own it, buy it, somehow figure out how to get it to other ownership.
Question number one, doesn't it have to be eight feet from the neighbors' abutted property? No?
For the same reason, but, and again, what we're doing here is, every applicant, everyone in this room who's a property owner, has the same rights as the applicant, to do with their property what the zoning allows them to do. So, we have to respect your potential future rights as an applicant too. Mr. Andrade, you've been before us, you, we...
So, I'm going to put up storage units on my neighbor's property.
If it's allowed in the, if it's allowed in the bylaw, I, you know, I hear you, I hear you.
If I have this, then mine can.
I hear you.
And again, I think we've heard, everyone's already heard tonight, but a lot of what we're looking at today is the fact that this property did pre-exist zoning, and had a structure and, it wasn't a vacant lot, so with that in mind, we have to consider whether it is allowed or not, and that's the permission that they're asking for tonight.
And you're going to be saying that this is fine?
We're saying that...
We haven't said anything yet, we haven't, we listened to the evidence and then we're going to discuss it, and then you're going to hear, you're going to hear us discuss it in front of you. We don't, we don't even have the...
We're having a closed door, then we can't...
We can't even have conversations by email about what did you think about that, or how, I mean, when Annie sends something out to us, it goes out to all of us, and we respond to Annie, is, I mean, there are no deliberations that take place outside this, the public hearing.
The restrictions on our communications that are not in front of you all go far beyond preventing us from being able to make decisions. They're a hindrance to scheduling a meeting. That's how much we are regulated in our ability to discuss anything with regard to zoning that is not in front of you all and noticed in advance.
And we are absolutely adhered to that, it's, we recognize our responsibilities in that, and that's why John disclosed his potential conflict, but doctrine of necessity, we had to have a hearing, we had to do something.
Just one last, please, Maria Marcelino, thirty-three guard room. So, we're understanding that you are saying that today you are going to vote on whether they can do this permissible, this permeable, whatever. That's what's being decided today, but it's not being decided today what they can actually put on that, and that's going to be something that will be later decided.
Correct.
Or agreed to or approved or what.
Yeah, they further have to take this to several other stops before that final decision is made.
Exactly what they can build is not being decided today. With exactly how many parking spaces, what they can build can't be any more impervious than we decide today, because that's relevant to what we're deciding. They would have to come back here if that change, plan changed.
Okay, one last question. Twenty-seven Jenkins Place, Joseph Ibradi. How many pocket spots did the Untold get? If they're going to get twenty-six, how many did the Untold get?
Again, a lot of that is going to be reviewed in planning board, so they have a count, how they do it, a determination.
Roughly, what do you think the Untold got? There it is?
I can't, I can't say, but again, they...
So, the street's considered parking?
No.
No.
When they look at the parking, there's, again, it goes back to the look of the bylaws, they have rules that they account for, the spaces account for so many pocket spaces, so they don't come up with a number arbitrarily, they base it on the number of units and the use of the units.
It's not uncommon for an applicant to come before the zoning with a proposed plan that kind of maximizes the possible use of the property, and then when they go to the planning board and the site review, they can come up with an alternative plan that, that they're willing to do to meet their wishes and hopes for their property, and sometimes the planning board can't come to an agreement. I mean, it's, there are, it's there that the, a lot of your concerns tonight need to be addressed. And again, as I said, it's a, it's an elected board, and they're there to help their constituents as we are here as an appointed board, but they, they do a pretty good job of being strict to, in enforcing the bylaws.
And again, you will be notified as well, they will send out letters, notifications, same way they did for this meeting.
I hope they have a larger room.
It's this room, I think.
I appreciate your comments, but, good to be...
Ready to close the hearing?
Yes.
Sure, just in conclusion, respectively, acid, you know, you grant the petition which we had, and the standard is the alteration of the existing impervious surface is not substantially more detrimental than the existing, of the proposed is substantially more detrimental than the existing impervious surface to the neighbor. That's the standard, that's what we're asking for, for all the reasons we work for.
Anything else? I mean, again, it seems, again, we're addressing that specific circumstance here in front of the zoning board. The use is allowed, the surface that's been presented to us today has less impervious surface than before, so it is moving in the right direction, the water is discharged on a lot, so a lot of it's...
So, to be clear, for us procedurally, are we, are they looking for a finding, or are they looking for a special permit?
Looking for a finding.
You're looking for a finding?
Yes.
Not a permit, I'm unclear as to how that differs from any other pre-existing non-conformity that we determine is not, we're not issuing permits in those instances, we're making findings.
Yeah.
Okay. Wait.
The difference here is, what's unusual about this, and while we still have a meeting open for input from the applicant, what's unusual about this finding that we're being asked to make... being asked to make is purely about permeability of the, the area, because we're in a Water Resource Protection District. We're not making a finding about setbacks, we're not making a finding about, because the proposed plan meets it, but we're not making a finding about use, we're not making a finding about special permit, we're not, this is purely, is the permeability of the, appropriate to the Water Resource Protection District.
So we're looking for finding on the 48, Section 6, 820, and 810.3.
Ready to close the-
And also, we will be closing the meeting, but just keep in mind that all that was discussed tonight also gives the applicant information as to issues that they might want to resolve later on in the process. So this, you know, you weren't unheard tonight. I'm quite sure that there are going to be some other meetings coming forward that you will have a chance to, you know, again, to speak up, to be heard of. At this point, we're, we're going to close the meeting for votes, so there's no more-
I have one more question, boys.
Last one.
Montaro, 9 Jenkins Place. The site plan's already been engineered on this piece of property, certified, I'm assuming, is that available to us?
Yes, we will have a copy that has been in our files, so it's the public information, if someone wants to go take a look at it.
Public information.
And the, the file is kept in the, it's not, it's not put in, it's in the Building Department, it's not down in the basement, so it's relatively easily accessed.
I guess we have the next meeting at the high school gym.
In, yeah.
One more issue, please, just a little bit quickly, I promise. Curtis Barker, 26 Jenkins Place. Under the bylaw, 520.5 Design and Operation Guidelines, D2, regarding the dissipation of the rainwater, such runoff shall not be discharged directly into rivers, streams, or other surface or water bodies, wetlands, or rental floors. Dry wells shall be prohibited. It sounds like the distribution of the water is suggested is going to be a dry one. It is not.
No.
All right, we'll be-
And once again, that will be something that will, another board will be taking up.
I'm going to close the-
Works for me.
And move to close the hearing?
Right.
Okay. Now we're in the-
Now we're in the discussion-
Now we're in the discussion mode, so thank you all for, you're welcome to stay, but comments heard from all parties are, unless we need clarification on something. Okay, you want to go first, who wants to go first?
No, go, go first, please.
I think the main issue here is clearly, if, if this were undisturbed land, there'd be, we wouldn't even be talking about it. I'm, I'm comfortable with the evidence before us that there is a stream here, the applicant's not challenging that it's a tributary. And I think our interest in protecting that is important. The existing situation is not ideal. There's an awful lot of non-pervious material. The applicant is proposing to reduce that amount of, that area, which would be a positive move, as I understand Water Resource Protection Districts. My only concern is that the proposed way of doing it concerns me a little bit because I am afraid when a, a parking area is, when the whole parking area is impervious, that it's likely to have unacceptable materials runoff into the ground, the water resource-
Pervious.
The pervious, when it's all pervious. When it's impervious, it's, it's even, it's better because you can channel that material into a treatment area, and then you're, you're actually capturing the bad things. Here, we're, we're in a catch 22. We're getting it more pervious, but I'd prefer to see it impervious on a parking lot. I don't, you know.
Yeah, and then again, it's, the recharge issues are done at the catch basin.
After it's, after it's treated, if necessary, if there has to be a, so, I don't even know what the, but I know there are ways that parking lots sometimes, catch material running off, catch runoff, treat it before it's discharged.
There are ways.
But we're not, we're not looking to do that here. We're looking to basically create area for, in the commercial application, the business application, a number of automobiles to be parked on a pervious material. I, that seems contrary.
For me, 20 cars being parked in a house's driveway, or five cars being parked in a house's driveway, and I'm not sure it's any more or less likely.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, it's more cars, there's a higher instance. It's a, catch 22 is a good way to describe it. Counterintuitive to the bylaw almost, but you make a very good point.
And I suppose, oh, Dr., I imagine the, the time we use is not, not very, you know, there'll be overnight parking or whatever, but that was planning board issue, so.
No, I think these, some of these questions can be answered by other boards, I'm just wondering if, if there is a place in our decision that we can consider that, because-
Consider making some of it impervious?
Well, I don't, it's within 150 feet of the tributary, I mean, that's, I mean, in a, in an ideal world, this, this land would go back to feral, you know, wild-
Cauliflower.
Cauliflower.
Yep.
But I don't think that's going to happen.
No.
So, conservation's going to have to weigh in on us. They're going to be the ones that are much, I, I don't feel qualified to decide whether, you know, the, the concerns about the tributary can be enforced in what's before us.
Yeah, and I guess, one other slight concern, not necessarily, we've got a 15-foot setback, that is not a matter of right, though.
We have a front.
Yeah.
The front is because it's pre-existing?
Yeah.
It's the pre-existing average?
It's a pre-existing average? All right, then that-
We need a finding on that, don't we? That that's not an intensification, that's substantially more detrimental.
Right, that's-
I see your point.
Yeah.
Can I get a suggestion that might address the concerns you're discussing?
Okay.
The existing impervious surface is 28%?
No.
Forty-four percent.
Forty-four percent.
Right. And if you want, you can authorize us, we'll look at, we don't know if you want a condition in here, that, subject to the, the issuance of a stormwater permit, that we could have up to 44% impervious surface. If you want us to try to create some more impervious surface, for the reason Ed said, if we can achieve it through a stormwater thing, we'll try to do that, but that's what we want.
That sounds like the best solution I could think of to your question, and we could leave whether or not they go more impervious up to the Conservation Commission.
Right. Whereas we, if we-
Up to a maximum of-
Yeah.
Even if it's 40% or whatever we determine.
Just to go back to the setback for a second, are, are we seeing this right? Presently, the closest structure to Old Country Way is 19.6 feet back?
Yes, that's on the existing conditions plan?
Yeah.
And, and you guys are going to be 14.4 feet back?
That's the average.
There is a setback with a 200 feet on two sides of it.
That's where, that's, that's where we get it, thank you.
All right, because usually we see the track, usually we see the track-
There's a-
So you are, you are beyond what the required setback by, by the bylaw under the average?
All right, good.
Thank you. Yep. I didn't think that one got by you, but I needed to get there.
No, but just so-
No, it's in, the applicant, yeah, what's, the applicant states it.
The condition of the vote is that at the, you know, at the approval of the Stormwater Authority, you can have up to 40% to use a fever number, impervious surface, as part of this decision, then we'll look at, it's up to the Stormwater people, when we can achieve it. If that's something that you'd like us to look at, we're certain.
Yeah, and that would be, again, for a greater filter and, you know, some other issues to help-
That would keep on?
Yeah, I mean, if it can't work, then we draft it back to a 28.
Correct.
But it-
But it gives us the flexibility, so we don't have to come back.
I think other, up to some of the other boards, whether it be Concom or Stormwater, or, I think we can draft our decision so that we're okay with up to 40% impervious, acknowledging that this is more now, or down, or less.
That's less than the existing situation.
Yeah, leave it, like you said, up to others to decide the balance between essentially giving them flexibility that I think we're allowed to give under the bylaw. That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
To pivot for a second, if we're ready on that, I, I'm comfortable that this is permeable. I am considering mentioning in a decision that there should be some form of operations and maintenance in place for it, because I think everyone agrees that there are situations where it could become impervious, which would be bad. Also, it concerns me a little bit that if, if this is out there, the bylaw, people could start permeably paving quite a bit of their lots, and I'm not sure the bylaw predicted that or anticipated that. So, and I'm not sure that's, I'm not sure that's before us tonight, but as this is our only avenue to speak about it, I think that's something for the board and for the public to keep in mind overall. But, yeah, I think that that's a good idea, and I think I'd like to see a motion include some measure of operation and maintenance, acknowledging that, I have no idea what's sufficient or insufficient.
A lot of that, too, is spelled out on Stormwater, Recharge, the Recommendation Plans that they have for vacuuming and frequency of maintenance, too, that's, it's usually spelled out pretty clear.
As, as it goes, as, what we're doing is, we're really considering pervious or impervious, I think it'd be worth mentioning some form of maintenance to maintain the pervious nature of the pavement in our, in our finding.
And also, they could limit what's put down, or they could solve.
For example.
Whatever they feel more, yeah, more knowledgeable.
They do look at those, they-
Great.
But again, I'm, I'm going to suggest that what's before us is a statement that it's permeable pavement. I don't, I haven't seen any clear definitive statement as to what-
Whether or not-
-type of perme, whether it needs maintenance, we-
Right.
We don't have the engineering specs on it, we have a statement that I'm willing to fully accept, that there are permeable pavement materials that meet the definition of permeable.
Then our decision could just state that whatever's there needs to continue to be permeable. And then that's it, and to the extent it ever wasn't, they'd be in violation of our decision.
Right. Anytime in the future, if it ceases to be permeable, it could no longer be used.
Yeah.
I'm suggesting a condition to say that, as a, as a condition of the permit, that the pervious pavement we've maintained to ensure its permeability.
That, again, that would cover the same.
More sense than what I was initially suggesting.
The finding.
Do we have a motion then?
I don't know how we-
Yeah, if, uh-
I might as well do the motion, see if we can pass it, it's, or not, because I don't know how we can avoid it. The move that the board find, that the proposed plan of alterations to the lot at 1416 Old Country Way by Ross Engineering and dated November 11th, any revision, November 11th, 2017, represents a change in permeable material, which is not more detrimental than the existing conditions? And further find that the permeable material, the permeable area of this lot shall not be less than?
Forty percent.
Forty percent?
Going forward.
Going forward. And that the, any permeable material be maintained in a way that the permeability is not compromised.
That makes sense.
Makes sense to me.
That makes sense?
Do the second?
Seconded.
Call was a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'll, I'll sort of draft a decision.
Thank you.
And to the, to the audience, all that that did was simply say that the water that runs, that's currently running into the ground on this lot, will continue to run into the ground on this lot, perhaps in, we're hoping in even a more appropriate way. The concerns that people raised about whether or not the, the stream is flowing properly, whether or not that culvert, or whatever we want to call it, is being maintained, those all, are all things that are real.
So all this is available for the right, I can pull?
The folder, the folder is, the folder can't be removed from the office, Annie?
Steve.
But there is a, and that, but the folder exists in, in its complete state. There aren't many engineering specs in this application, it's just stated as being-
What's that?
That, no, that is-
No.
No. Those, those, that, you can take the, and-
Just, just so everyone knows-
John's saying you can take those, and they're there, so that's the engineering-
We have another half-let coming up next, so we're going to have to, if you could just, we have another half?
Yes. You can take those.
Yeah, I'm good, yeah.
All right, sir, I gotta go to the bullpen.
Dinner.
Did you?
I did have dinner. My mother-in-law's at my house, and she made a chicken papaya, it looks awesome. It's fresh, she makes the best pies.
We're going to need you to carry some of the loads, sir, I'm, I'm fatiguing.
I should let you do this first, I would have had to watch this. Oh, they think they deserve to be heard, I don't know that they were, but. Is this the one that's got the issue?
Oh, which one's first?
If we could just close those, a couple of doors, too, please.
That is my seat, so, oh, did you move over here?
I did, I did. Oh, it's rubbing back and forth.
It's hot over here.
No, he, they blocked me with the plan.
Yeah.
Our second applicant, that is-
I always do this, I bury the agenda.
Jennifer Young Watts, 516 Central Avenue in Needham, wants a special permit finding in order to MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and/or Section 810.2A of the situating bylaw, to construct in addition to the notes on dwelling at 18 North Street, situate, assess your map, set your plot, and supply, increasing the growth floor area by more than 20%.
Wrong notebook.
Thank you. If you would like to, just state your name and go over the project.
My name is Jeff, Jeff Young, and I am the owner of the property.
And my name is Timothy Burke, I'm the architect for the project.
All right. Tim, if you would just show us-
Sure, be happy to, thank you very much for this opportunity. I have here a aerial view of the house at 18 Lowell Street, and the, what happened was, two winters ago, they had a pipe freeze in the house, it pretty much demolished the inside of the house. I started working with the family to rebuild the house, and we've come up with a design that we think fits well and meets the needs of the family. And it's an interesting approach in that we're going to basically preserve the house, but lift it up to meet the new elevation requirements for the zone, and put a new first story under it, so we're, we're being very green by saving all that and reusing it. The issue that is before you tonight is that the current- The issue that is before you tonight is that currently the side yard here on this side of the house is non-conforming. As part of this work, when we rebuild the, the house, we're gonna move it over and remove the non-conforming. And so, we were asked to come here as part of the scale of the renovation, I believe.
O, o, over the twenty percent?
Correct.
And what's the height of the?
The, I can't get it here, the. It's a, I think it was thirty-seven feet. I, I don't see it right on the drawings, I think it's in my, right.
Oh, the cut sheet? So.
Three stories, thirty-five feet required.
Thirty-three feet, five inches?
Yeah, that's it, I'm sorry, yeah.
The, the lot's conforming?
Lot's conforming.
If the lot's conforming, and the new house is going to comply with all of the setbacks, why are they here?
Because the, because you're renovating a non-conforming structure.
Is this just a flaw in the bylaw?
I don't see why they're here.
I don't think they're here, I don't think they need to be here.
Well, here's my, here's my issue first.
Well, but I've been wrong before, but haven't you, haven't you enjoyed it?
Non-conforming.
But, but, two things, it's, the, the, I was not able to locate an existing non-conformity on the plan, so it would be great if you could tell us where it is, and it needs to be identified on the plan.
Exactly, right here.
It says eight point one.
That's the proposed.
That's the proposed, the existing.
But you don't show the, you do not show the existing non-conformity.
So, bu, bu, before that counts against you, let's make sure you need to be here, maybe.
Right, because here's the other big issue. This, this, this house was, is said to have built in nineteen seventy-four, okay? And if it was built in nineteen seventy-four, it does not predate the zoning. See where I'm going? So it's not pre-existing non-conforming, because it has to be pre-existing non-conforming to the, do we have a different?
Well, again, none of this matters if the new house isn't gonna have any non-conformities.
Let me, let me clarify, if you can help me here. What I'm seeing on the plan is, where you have the eight foot marked, you have a pre-existing deck, or an existing deck, which seems to be the portion that is non-conforming, that is in, that is encroaching.
No, it's the house itself, I wanna remember it's seven point six feet right now.
From the property, I?
Seven point oh six.
I don't care if it's listed, it doesn't show on the map, it doesn't show on the plan.
If the, if the new house, if they applied to you for a building permit.
If this burned, if they burned down and they applied to you for a building permit.
For the new proposed structure?
Regulations?
Would, would you think they needed to come to us?
No.
Okay.
I don't want them to be in front of us, because we, I can't, what do you got, Annie? Annie's like waving, help me out.
I just want to make sure that, with all respect, we've been going through this process for a extended period of time, if, if there's a reason why we should be here, then I'd like to make sure that we get the issues addressed.
Absolutely, one hundred percent. We're not gonna kick you out and then make you come back, we don't want to do that either.
But it, it helps us to understand how we're going to act if there's, if there's nothing, if there's not a big issue here, but one for, go ahead.
I saw on the assessor's card that was submitted with the application, that the year built was in fact nineteen seventy, so I felt that there must be something before that if there's a non-conformity. So I went back and dug through these old assessor's cards, and I found sketchy at best. But in nineteen forty-one, the owner of record was the Homarock Beach Improvement Association, and then in nineteen sixty-two, it was to Mabel, Mabel Taffley. But the card has some writing on it.
It matters.
When they're really old, from the assessor's marks, and there's some dates. So there's an inspection dated nineteen fifty-seven, and then there was something, another note that was earlier somewhere.
So there was a structure there.
Well, is there a structure there?
That analysis would matter if they wanted to maintain a non-conformity, but it seems like they want to eliminate all non-conformities, in which case, I'm not sure you need any zoning, in which case, I'm sure you don't need any zoning relief. I think you need a building permit.
If you want to maintain.
Does anybody, I'm welcoming someone disagreeing with you, all of you have more experience in this than me, but this seems relatively straightforward to me.
With the work being performed, we thought it was best to conform.
Always better to double-check.
Once, once you took it down.
Maybe double-check before you pay for the application, but, but, better safe than sorry, I guess.
So.
What say you, Mr. Vogel?
No, I would agree, I mean, if the new, if the new construction doesn't have any violations of zoning, then it's permissible.
I mean, we, we have it right here.
It could be, it could be pre-existing non-conforming.
Just one other question, just to review on the rear.
Or not, it would still be permissible.
The rear setbacks is required twenty feet?
It's a corner lot, so it gets the twenty-foot radius.
So it gets the twenty-foot radius, okay, so it's clear there, and it says existing at eighteen.
We often see a, an applicant come to us and need our relief from us, even though the house will comply with all setbacks, because the lot is non-conforming. Here, the lot's conforming.
We've got the width, the frontage, area.
I, I don't think you need any relief from us whatsoever.
As long as you build within the setbacks, I think you're fine, too. And as long as, but, he says he's gonna issue a building.
Now, now, well, just a devil's advocate.
Yeah, well, no, there's, there's.
Devil's advocate, let's just look at this. If you were going to take the existing house, which is non-conforming, there is a non-conforming, we're recognizing that it is too close to the lot line, and increase the size of that by sixty-five percent.
More than twenty percent.
Like, more than twenty percent.
Only if they were maintaining the non-conforming.
And in the process of lifting it and doing all this work, they don't move it, was it eight tenths of?
Eight inches.
Eight inches. If you don't move it at eight inches, you're in violation, unless we say you don't have to.
Right, then you'd need our permission.
That's why we moved it in the.
But because you're relocating it in the process, it no longer is a non-conforming structure being, it, arguably, it's a structure being taken down and being.
Raised and rebuilt.
Raised and reconstructed, in conforming in all respects.
Now.
Which we could grant without any problem.
One thing jumped out at me while they were speaking, it sounded like they said that in order to get the existing home out of the flood zone, they were going to raise it and then put another floor beneath it. You're better for that, but that doesn't sound like getting the home out of the flood zone, that sounds like getting the second and third floor of a home out of the flood zone.
No, the lowest, the lowest living floor will be above base flood elevation.
Okay, great.
Sufficiently, all of that's gonna happen.
They're going to have to move the house in order to get the pilings, and while they do that, they build a, they build a first floor, and then they slide the.
In this instance. This first floor allows me to put in the proper bracing that I need.
To support, to move the house on top.
I think, I think it's best that we don't find anything, and I think it's best for them if they withdraw, no?
Well, let's wait a second, we have a hearing, so we have to.
Yes, I, let's.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Well, so if we look at eight ten point two B, non-conforming building or structure with sufficient lot frontage and area, non-conforming as to one or more of the dimensional requirements, and it.
Is the dimension for that setback? Doesn't, it doesn't matter, they're looking to build a whole new house.
For rear or front setbacks, proposed alteration, extension, shall meet all requirements. Da-da-da-da-da.
Frankly, if you, if you read eight ten point two, it's possible to read it, that you do need zoning relief for this project.
I think so, seriously, when I'm looking at it.
Because if you're starting out with a non-conforming structure, let's just say it is a raise and reconstruct, and you rebuild somewhere else in the lot, within the setbacks this time, it still seems to apply if you.
And it starts as a non-conforming, so you have to go here.
Correct.
Even though it doesn't, it ends as a performing, forming lot, then you don't need future relief for anything you want to do.
That's how I would read it.
If they're here, it might be something to.
In the case of. Because it's non-conforming, it's got sufficient lot frontage and area, but it's non-conforming as to side yard setback. Everything else has to meet all the.
To, to be honest, I think, there are other areas of the code where we interpret it in a way that they couldn't have possibly intended for the applicant to need zoning relief for that issue, and I think that same interpretation applies here. They are, put it this way, if we said no, we would be overturned, because they don't need any zoning relief, so we should never be asked the question, and I think it's better for us to not be asked the question.
I think, I actually, I changed my mind, I think they do need it, because it's, because they still have a non-conforming structure, and they're, they're altering, reconstructing, extending, it has to meet all dimensional requirements, except that the building, the more than twenty percent may not be permitted by Bob, and this is sixty-some percent.
But it's, but the building.
The way I was reading it, very honestly.
The section starts, the building commissioner may permit the repair, alteration, reconstruction, extension of a lawful dimensionally non-conforming, yada, yada, yada. This is not a dimensionally non-conforming building.
Oh, yes, it is.
I gotta read the last sentence.
No, no, it says permit the repair.
Six inches too close to the property line.
It says permit the alteration, reconstruction, or extension, or, they're not reconstructing a dimensionally non-conforming structure.
When they reconstruct it, it won't be.
That's what they're looking for approval to do, they're not looking for approval to maintain or alter a non-conforming structure. That, that's the hinging.
Obviously not, not gonna argue with the board, I will just tell you that I didn't, I don't read it that way.
I do believe it is something that can be read both ways, but I would, I'm agreeing with Anthony, I think that if you're, if you were looking to reconstruct and maintain a non-conformity, that's an issue, but if you have a situation where the house had been destroyed by fire, you'd have to, you, you have the right to come back and say, I want to reconstruct it with the non-conformity, but if you relieve the non-conformity, you save all those paths, you just come and get a building permit. The, the, the risk for the applicant is if they take down their, their structure, and then they refused a building permit to put a new one back, which is why they.
How, how could that ever happen?
I don't know how it could, because if there's no structure there.
Unless you go for two permits, you can go for a demolition permit and then come back for a building permit later.
But if, but if the structure were demo, if, if they demoed it, then they have a buildable lot, on which they could build the structure they want.
Put a structure anyplace.
Yeah. This is, if I was the applicant, I would say this is not an alteration or addition to a non-conforming structure, this is the creation of a conforming structure.
They intend to demolish a non-conforming structure and create a conforming structure.
They're not demolishing it, they're just raising it.
They're going to, it's gonna become an.
You're not demolishing it, right?
They're going to.
We're gonna save the house.
They're going to preserve, they're going to preserve, they're gonna preserve, construct, they're gonna preserve components of the existing structure, and incorporate them in the new.
Well, they could get a, they could get a permit to lift the house, pull it back for a permit.
What's the difference between that and demolishing? But, what, what's important to me, and why I think it's worth discussing, is that by saying, under eight ten point two, that they need to come before us and need to pay for the application, we're requiring a fee for someone to build a structure that's totally conforming under our bylaw.
Yes, we do it all the time.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not correct, and will be struck down by a court, in my humble opinion, and I don't, I don't think it's in the town's interest to enforce the bylaw that way, and I don't think that was the intention of the bylaw, and our job as members of the board are, is to interpret the intention of the bylaw. I don't feel that this was the intention of the bylaw.
Well, I guess also, want to make sure that they leave with one or two things, one, Bob feeling comfortable issuing the permit, you know.
I, I absolutely do, I mean, certainly not having reviewed in detail the final application for a permit, but this would not be a reason for me not to issue a permit.
But also at the end.
Based on our conversation.
At the end of the day, the permit application is gonna be a conforming building, a performing lot, with a conforming width, that the as-built will be submitted to you guys.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna shut this down without talking to you.
Yeah.
And there, and there is a, there is a silver lining here. By being here in a public hearing, you are disclosing that you're going to do this work, so anyone who's in the neighborhood who has any interest in, in letting you know their concerns or whatever, that you might not yet be aware of, you're able to be made aware of them, and although they may not be able to come to agreement, you're not responsible to abide by what your neighbor wants for color or texture or anything else, at least they have an opportunity to be heard, so it's, that's a good thing. Before you, before you start the project, you don't want someone coming and asking Bob to get a cease and desist because they never heard about it, didn't know anything about it, and is it legal, that type of thing, so.
And we, just a question from the audience.
Oh, yes. Excuse me, my name is Lawrence Janina, twenty-four Lowell Street, and we directly about the Youngs' property. And our concern, if you will, we're very pleased about the fact that they're gonna renovate their home, but we do have two concerns, two complaints. Two issues of non-compliance will be maintained based on our reading of the new plans, okay? And if what doesn't show up on the plans, nothing to discuss, are the following, one is how rear deck encroachment on our Eastman property, the property, I'll show you right here, it doesn't show well here, this is. This is the Youngs' property right here, our property. This is our property as well, which the Youngs, Eastman, to park vehicles and to operate their septic system to maintain and repair it. The deck here on the plans, that deck appears to, it's gonna be maintained or upgraded or something. It is currently, and has been, encroaching on our property.
Yeah, that's shown on this plan, too.
Okay.
Point, point, point eight one, according to the.
Looks like it extends beyond the property line.
Looks like it extends over the property line. Yes, yes, and it, and it's, and it does show on the plan that was submitted to us as well, it says here, deck encroachment, so, we do know about it, but that's good.
And then, the other encroachment is the power line, that runs from this side of Central, across the Eastman property to the Youngs' here, it's a power line, okay? And there's no, the Eastman, there's no Eastman that, for that power line, that cuts across our property.
I think, I think that issue is your issue, I don't know that they need one for an overhead power line, personally, I, I mean, I don't know that they don't, I don't know that they do, but that's an issue with you and the power company.
Okay, I was given the understanding that is in fact, if they don't have an Eastman ride for utilities in summer, and that cuts across our property, then that's non-compliance.
Non-compliance with what?
Not with a zoning.
Not with the zoning code.
Right.
But with, but with the power company, the power company can relocate that line to another pole, put an additional pole in, do a mid-line tap, and they can do a lot of things that will take it off your concern. It may be inconvenient for the power company, but I was, but in our, my understanding, the power company is responsible to the weatherhead of the house.
Correct.
So anything from the weatherhead on the house, out to the power source, is the power company's concern, and they would, they would be able to react to it.
Of course.
They would, they would own it as well.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And the, private is a strange word, because we're talking about a power company as well.
Is it the meter in Massachusetts, or the, or the weatherhead?
Meter is the dividing.
But the, but the deck encroachment would be a private matter in that regard as well, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the zoning code does not enforce setbacks for a deck.
No.
Correct.
Yeah.
This is.
I understa, I understand, that's a, that's a private land dispute between two abutters.
Can we just seal our lawyer?
Or ask, or ask them if they.
Or even better, talk to your neighbor, but.
This is the, this is what you're talking about, this area right here?
Yes.
It looks like it's maybe six. It looks like it's maybe six inches or something.
It's about nine, yeah.
Well, I'm sure we can pull that back for you.
It would seem that with all the work you're doing, that it would be a very reasonable investment.
You're touching the...
Maybe even, even pull it back a couple of feet and put a hedge right there to, if that's appropriate, and talking with your neighbor's a great way to resolve that sort of thing.
So that leaves us up with a matter, I, I think if the board's inclined, if Bob willing a demolition permit, I think we should allow that process to take place, the end result, I think, I don't know that we need a decision.
I personally think you do, I don't have any problem granting it, but I'm just...
Yeah, my, my only concern would be if, at some point in this process, someone had very strenuous objections to this project going forward, they could read that, this language, or their attorney could read this language, in the opposite direction.
And tie, and just tie it up.
And tie it up.
I mean, I, I think ultimately we would be, the issuance of the building permit would be upheld by any reasonable person, but I do understand that people can complicate things.
Yeah, that, that swings the other way, in that us making a finding here and putting it of record serves as additional argument that everyone who's doing this needs that same finding.
We do it all the time, that's what I keep saying.
But no, I don't think we do when someone's building an entirely conforming structure.
We don't, no question, we don't.
I've never seen it in five years, and...
We've seen it multiple in 12.
I don't think I've ever seen us issue a building permit, issue a finding associated with building and conforming.
In the instances that I've seen it, the lot has been non-conforming, which is a very important difference.
But this says, building or structure where said building or a portion thereof is non-conforming.
That's...
This is the one that I think, you know, I mean, it was the Orenberger Group that brought this to the forefront before, and saying, you know, that if it wasn't more than 20%, they don't need the, but this is the 20% that makes it...
That's for a non-conforming structure or lot.
We got a non-conforming structure.
What they're, what Bob is being asked to improve, approve, is a fully conforming structure. These, this gentleman wishes to build a structure that is entirely conforming with the zoning bylaw.
We've got one other comment from the...
Brian Sullivan, Sherman Drive.
Thank you.
Philosophically, I wanna throw something out there for the board to consider, 48 Section 6 affords a property owner lots of protection, and it's protection today and it's protection in the future because it's, it's a grandfathered structure. They lose that if the new structure is 100% conforming, and it seems to me it might be a compromise to move the structure but still leave a slight encroachment. So you're, you're reducing the non-conformity, and you still have that protection of 48 Section 6. Personally, I would be loath to give up 48 Section 6 protection if I didn't have to. And you'd still, it's, it obviously meets the standard, it's a substantial improvement over what's there, and you still have 48 Section 6 protection, the decision makes them bulletproof, they remove the encroachment from the deck, and everyone's happy.
Interesting concept.
And they have that 48 Section 6 protection going forward. Just, it's, it's a philosophical thing.
It's a, it's a philosophical and trending towards legal advice, which we certainly don't give, and I think we'll leave it at that. Yeah, we could, Brian, we can comment on the application before us, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I...
Well, I think, I mean, it's up to what, what you guys feel like, as I say, Bobby says, if we grant the decision, or a decision, it's granted, they get their rights, and essentially they become a conforming structure when it's built. Right now, Sarah's point is that, as it sits now, it is non-conforming. Yes, it will be conforming after the fact, but, you know, if you want to...
It's required to be conforming under Section B, it's required to be conforming.
Under the zoning bylaw.
Because you can't, you can't really prove that it's pre-existing.
No, I think Annie, Annie says that she's got boards, that was, that was my initial thing, but she says she's got something that shows there was a structure in the 40s.
Does it make a difference if that structure, however, was conforming?
In the 40s?
Yeah.
But that was, at the time it was built, it's not conforming to current bylaws.
I, I get it, yeah, I, I get it. But it was pre, pre-existing.
Pre-existed the current bylaws.
But I think...
I mean, what happened for better or for worse is when they built...
Structure pre-existing does not make a non-conforming structure pre-existing, so...
Right.
We could be in a situation where the structure that existed prior, lacking any other evidence, was conforming, that this structure...
If it's still remnant today, right.
If it was rebuilt in 1974, do we know that?
That seems about right, we don't want to know exactly.
We, in 1974, they made an error in the, in the survey, and created a non-conformity, which they should not have done.
Right.
But we cannot, down the road, take that away from them, but, but it also means that...
A10 wouldn't apply.
A10 wouldn't apply, so, I mean, I'm, I'm very comfortable with the concept of withdrawing without a finding, and without prejudice, so that in the event that some, for some reason you feel like you had to come back in the future, you could on the same matter. But I'm, I'm agreeing with you, Anthony, that if we, I don't want to get on the path that anyone who has a non-conforming structure, who wants to take it down and build a structure completely conforming on a lot, has to come before us, because there should be no reason to do that.
In a town where we don't have enough members to sit on the board, and we certainly don't have an overstaffed building department, I don't...
We have enough members, nobody wants the job, though.
No, but that, but that's...
Plenty of people to do the job, they just don't want to do the job.
But, but that is, that is a concern, if, if every non-conforming structure in order to get a building permit, to build a conforming structure on a conforming lot, has to come to the zoning board to get permission to do that, that's not what our bylaws are intending. And that's really what this is asking, this applicant is asking to build a conforming structure on a conforming lot, which is a building permit. In the light of this hearing, we have discovered a couple of things that have been helpful, one, that the encroaching deck is, is not a convenience for the neighbor who is being, upon whom you are being encroached, you are encroaching, and it would be to your benefit to move it, and I think that's not an unreasonable request, and...
I agree.
But again, I don't want to create, I mean, I'm happy to make the finding, you're gonna get this no matter what, but if, if the, if we make the finding, we are setting a precedent that everyone has to come forward.
It bothers me, the idea of us even giving the appearance of deciding that someone is entitled to a building permit, that Bob would have granted if they just would have come to him.
Well, and the other thing also...
Well, Bob was concerned about the, the idea that, the interpretation of the bylaw, so...
Yeah, but...
But we're solving that by our discussion here.
But also, going forward, like we, we said, that, you know, ASBIL's gonna be required, so that we know that the, that the end of the project will conform, we don't, you know, so that, that's, I, I think those are safeguards that are allowing to move forward with the project end, there, noted Sarah's point too, but I, I think we can weigh that out, and the applicant could still have, have his project.
Yeah.
The applicant, if you want to think about it quickly, yeah, the idea to withdraw, if you withdrew without prejudice, you could come back and have us adjudicate this as a board.
Right, and if I decide to, if I request that we have a finding now?
Yep, we, we will make a finding.
So, I'll be honest, this has been a long process, you know, we've owned the house for two years, and we've, we've been in Humrock since the 1970s, my family's been there since 1950s, so it's, we'd like to get in as soon as we can, if the finding gives that clarity, I would prefer to have the finding, I know, I understand the check, and I appreciate your comment, but at this point, I would prefer to have clarity and allow Bob to feel very comfortable issuing a building permit so that we can move forward.
Well, I, just to clarify that, I would feel equally comfortable, I mean, I'm, you know, not bound by, but, but certainly, the, you know, the board's, the board's feeling on this is, is whatever, you know, I think it's been said, you will get your building permit one way or another.
But the applicant has put time and effort and money into doing this, I think it, to meet the concerns of the citizen who's coming before us, we can offer finding without making a statement about, we've actually made a statement in our discussions about how this should be handled in the future, and as a courtesy to the applicant, I'd say we move a finding.
Okay. Sarah, do you want to make this motion?
No, I don't think so, thank you for the opportunity, but I'll pass.
Move to find that the applicant, move to the finding, the applicant's proposed renovations to the property at 18 Lowell Street, as shown on a plan, revised 110-2018, is, will not, will not create any non-conformities, new, old, or indifferent, and will result in an entirely conforming structure on an entirely conforming lot. That's a finding.
Second.
Seconded.
Oh.
A little favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're just gonna take a two-minute recess to the next applicant.
Nice to see you, Larry.
Good to see you.
Hey, recognize you while you're going, when you...
One more, I'd say.
I'd want it if I was...
Good job, nice, nice to meet you, finally, yeah. That sounds good to me.
Thanks, okay.
Of course.
I'm sure, you know, a little convoluted, but dotted the i's, crossed the t's.
You guys had a week? Did you do anything fun out there?
Nothing going on out there. So you, you guys approved the change of use? Do you not read the, that's what it says? To exchange, to standard alter, to persist to non-conforming use.
The decision will control.
Just be sure to walk, you don't want another car.
Right. Of the maximum...
Or ride your bike.
Yeah, that's, that's the typo.
I'm just glad I'm done. This'll be, should be cool.
I was trying to, am I writing? Who's up?
I don't know. Is he really?
Can I, can I wait on it until after they...
I'll do it. I'll do, I'll do it. What's that?
I'm gonna be out of town for next week, so...
I'll do it. Yeah, I'll do it.
Take it with me, did you say?
No, she said beg your pardon.
We'll see if we can get Anthony onto his ticket, but, we're all set for after three.
Okay. Bob Urwick of 17 New Driftway in Situage requests a special permit under Section 610-2B of the Situage zoning bylaw to allow the creation of a 50-foot frontage lot at 25 and 31 Torrey's Lane in Situage, subject to Act 35 Lot 1, Project 26A and 26B.
Hi, guys, my name's James Garfield, I'm one of the engineers at Morse Engineering. I represent Bob Urwick for this division of Land in Torrey's Lane. So, we're here for a special permit in accordance with 610-2B of the zoning bylaws to allow frontage of 50 feet for a lot at the existing 25 and 31 Torrey's Lane. So, this project has previously been approved in 2005 as well as 2016, and here's more recent of the plans. So, the client is proposing basically to make a revision to the property lines. As you can see here on the previous plan, we've got Torrey's Lane on the left, Lot 1, shown here.
If you could just maybe step to one side, just so the, I think a couple of the audience members had some questions, just so they could see.
And then Lot 2 is shown here. So what we're proposing is, as you can see on the project that was approved in 2016, the 50-foot frontage exists underneath Lot 1, and what we are proposing is to bring that 50-foot right away above it and move Lot 1 down. Lot, Lot 1 is currently conforming with the residents' R2 zone, we have 100-foot frontage as well as 20,009 square feet of lot area. Again, Lot 2 has 50 foot of frontage, 50 feet of frontage and 40,013 square feet. These lots have been designed to conform with the zoning bylaws, and we would expect that any conditions placed on the 2016 project also be placed on this one, and that's pretty much all we got for you, so if you guys have any questions, we'll pass it over to you.
Just, just the audience, again, these were two existing lots, and this is gonna be proposed, two existing lots, just a little different location, and again, the second lot, or the 50-foot lot, in order to become a 50-foot lot, gives up double the square footage needed, and cannot be further divided down the road, so that, again, Lot 2 in the proposed plan can't be two lots in the future, it can only stay as one now, so just, I imagine there'd be some questions on that, but that hasn't changed anything, and what were the other restrictions on the prior?
So, that was the only condition, was that Lot 2 can't be divided.
I'm a little confused, so you, you were apparently here in 2005, and it was divided?
It wasn't actually us that did that, I know Merrill Associates was the more recent of the two, and...
What was done in 2005, I'm confused.
For the record, Gregory Morse, Morse Engineering, in 2005 Merrill Associates put forward a plan to do a 50-foot frontage lot, which is the plan that you see right here.
Okay.
In 2016, they came back in front of you because the special permit had essentially expired at that point, so it was reissued.
The lot was never, never changed?
Correct, the lot was never changed, it was just reissued because the special permit had expired. Our client, Bob Urwick, wants to change that 50-foot access piece, is all it is, it doesn't create any additional lots, it just redivides those two in a different fashion. What the Merrill plan didn't identify at that time is there's actually a wetland on the site that we've identified.
Yeah, I see that.
And that's the primary reason why we've relocated that 50-foot access handle.
Seems a little crazy that it wasn't...
It's, it's not a...
It seems so straightforward compared to the other lot, it was just like crazy.
The wetlands, though, maybe not wetlands in 2005? Whoever would like to respond, the, the wetlands issue, it needs to be twice the lot area of uplands, this, this wetlands, because it is intermittent, doesn't apply to that, is that...
Sure, so the wetlands out here are local wetland only under Situage Conservation bylaw, it's not a state-regulated wetland, and how the bylaw reads is it needs to be twice the upland land area, and it can't include any state-regulated wetlands in that calculation, so this lot does comply, it does have 40,000 square feet.
And this is not a state-regulated...
State-defined, state-defined uplands.
And they're state, local jurisdiction only on the plan.
Yep, it's, yes, I saw it on the plan, I just wanted to have it part of the record.
Any questions from, just name and address, please?
Thanks for sticking around.
Mike Mulcahy, 21 Torrey's Lane, I'm the guy right next to this, I may. So I'm the guy right here. This whole area here, in the spring, most, sometimes in the winter, sometimes right up until May or June, underwater, pumping, you know, depends on the time, it depends on the seasons, sometimes it's dry, we get ducks swimming out there, that's how deep it is sometimes, and I've got some popper on the 24/7 sometimes. This house across the street's up there... This house across the street's up the hill. This house over here is up the hill. My concern is what is going to be here? It might further create a hole drowning me, you know, like the other poor guy says, pumping 24/7. That happens to me. So when the other configuration was here, it seemed, you know, like the way the lot was going to be used might, might be more mitigating to the water problem. What is going to be here? Is this going to be all non-permeable pavement and I'm just going to have more water problems? So that's my concern about that.
It's going to have to be some sort of a driveway.
Correct. Through that access handle, there would be a driveway constructed. The house is set further back on the lot in, in this location. And we, we do have filings in front of Conservation right now for a stormwater permit and a notice of intent on that lot. So you'll see a notice, if you haven't gotten it already, that there's a separate meeting specifically off that.
Is it going to be mitigating the water problem or is that driveway going to be adding to the problem?
Sure. So under the, under the stormwater bylaw, what we've done is we've done an analysis of what runs off the site now or what ponds at the site now. And then we run an analysis on what we're proposing to do. We take into account the driveway, the roof runoff, et cetera. And we propose mitigation in the form typically of roof drywells, maybe crushed stone trenches along the driveway, grass depressions, which would capture the runoff off the driveway and infiltrate it back into the ground. We're not allowed to increase the rates or the volumes of runoff off of the site post-development. So I, I don't have those calculations here. That's in front of Conservation Commission, but that's how we address that, is by installing drywells. And we certainly have taken the topography into consideration and we would have.
Is that, is that house up a hill or is that going to be elevated?
It is. It is elevated. So the concern is it's going to have more runoff down to me.
In the, in the stormwater mitigation, the public hearing, discussions could be made about whether a swale or something like that might help to alleviate your concerns. It's good to have them, you know, aired here because obviously it lets the engineers have a chance to look at it and consider it.
Is that another hearing?
Yes.
You said I get a notice letter.
Yeah, this is purely to redefine the lot lines and create a new, a new lot, which under our bylaws would not be conforming, except that they've met the requirements of a 50-footage, 50-foot frontage lot, so.
And it might be a case with this information too, like you said, the driveway might be put farther away from your property so that you have room to put a little buffer there for any runoffs that would happen.
I'm sure the applicant doesn't want his driveway overwhelmed with water either, so. Yes, just your name and address, please.
Yes, John Head, 9 Torrey's Lane, I'm on, uh, section just next to, next to. And can someone just turn the.
Easel?
Easel around, uh, but to the other side of what's on there for the 2016 here? So my question is this, at the end of Torrey's Lane, it appears, and I remember in 2016 this plan, so.
The land of the town of Situate?
Uh, this, was the original driveway going to be here?
No, that's the town of Situate. I think the original driveway was just to the right of that.
Just to here?
Yes.
Okay. And do I have this correct, that the reason that this is not going to, that you want to change this is because there, you've discovered a wetland right here? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And why didn't they, why did they approve this in 2016?
Because it meets all the dimensional requirements.
So they approved it in 2016, but now it's being changed.
Again, it was approved in 2005. In 2016, the permit was just, it expired, so it was extended.
Right, but they, but they, now they want to move the, the lots so they can get the 50-foot, um, uh, new lot to put in the driveway.
No, I don't think, I think, I don't think you're representing it the way I'm hearing it at least.
That's why I'm asking.
The, the wetlands was not identified on the 2005 original application. Whether it was there or not in 2005, it's 13 years ago. It's an intermittent wetlands. It's possible that it wasn't, it was a particularly dry season. I don't know.
Correct.
But it wasn't identified. That isn't the reason this being represented as to why they're looking to change it. They could build with the, with that, um, intermittent wetlands, they could basically construct along the lines of this plan, but the applicant would rather have the driveway above. One reason might be that bringing the Lot 1 closer to the golf course is, you know, for view purposes or other things. There can be a number of reasons why they're changing it, but it's simply they're asking to, to do a dimensionally compliant lot, 50-foot frontage lot, um, and the wetlands doesn't have anything to do with, whether it complies or not.
Right. I was more, I was more curious about the 2016 plan, not the 2005.
Well, the 2016 is the same plan.
Same plan.
It was just, it was being, it was being renewed. The, the permit was running out.
It gets a little confusing.
Yep.
Because I've heard so many times that Mr. Morse is also doing it across the street on a two-seater press, which is Torrey's Lane corner, which is right here. It's going to happen at the same time probably. And I have a question also, and that is, um, will the, should we dug up to create new water mains to create a fire hydrant? What's going to happen with the water mains going down the length of Torrey's Lane?
Actually, we're not sure, but they want to address that.
Sure. It was our understanding that the town of Situate was going to do a water improvement project in the next several years on Torrey's Lane. That might be expedited at the developer's expense to make these lots buildable. I understand that there is need for a new water main in this location and a fire hydrant. I think the developer is taking that on as part of the development of these two lots.
They can't go before, until we grant the permit for the 50-foot frontage lot, they can't go forward with the, their, their plan. They can't address any of those concerns.
Right. So if this gets approved, then it goes next to the, um, the next level, which is the developer would then be responsible for creating the water main and the fire hydrant down the street.
Those discussions may be had with town boards at that time.
There would be another set of discussions. Um, I, okay, I'm just curious, because there's, there's a, there's a tremendous amount of construction going on in this spot and, and that's just part of it.
Michael Burman, Torrey's Lane. It's okay to ask, I'm just curious, why the, you want to make it up for it? I'm just really curious, what, what, what's happening?
Uh, two reasons. One being, as we noted, the wetlands that were located. And then secondly, it's more aesthetically pleasing to the golf course in the back, to not have the drive right there, pull Lot 1 up and.
Oh, okay.
So each lot would back up to the golf course?
Okay.
Bob, I take it you're clear with this?
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
The plan notes that the lot shall not be further subdivided, um, note two, as we require by the bylaw.
Yes.
So move to grant the applicant's, um, request for a 50-foot frontage lot, as shown on a plan dated January 11th, 2018. Um, uh, plan of land in Situate. Showing a subdivision of parcels 55-1, 26A and 55-1, 26B, vacant lots off Torrey's Lane.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I know. I thought it was like the son or something.
Good job.
Yeah, Greg looking over, showing her, I bet she's new.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Do we have minutes?
Oh, do we have minutes?
I think we might have minutes.
Yeah.
Everything's, uh, it's been a crazy week, but free day week.
Annie?
That's a nice thing.
Do we have minutes?
How about you?
Twelve.
Yeah. Um, you may know this already, but Jen and, uh, and the social, social worker, we were in Mary's house recently, uh, I think.
January?
Last week maybe even recently. Said things were good. Yep. You know, plenty of stuff, but nothing that would approach any problem.
John, Sarah, Ed, Anthony. So moved.
Good discussion with her.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Bill's up there?
No, not, not.
December 21st. Approved.
As amended.
Sarah and Anthony.
Sarah and Anthony?
Second, second. On favor? Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Nope.
John, Sarah, Ed. Moved to approve.
Which one?
Thank you.
Second, January 18th. Second.
January 25th. John, Sarah, Ed, Anthony.
Move to approve.
Approved. Moves.
All in favor? Aye. Any, anything else?
No. No more. No more.
Good night, Sarah.
We're off.